We would like to call the December 12th Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Moving on to item number three on the agenda, the role of the Planning Commission. I'm just going to read this real quickly. The Planning Commission consists of five residents appointed by the city council. The commission administers the comprehensive plan, zoning and subdivision regulations. The commission conducts public hearings and provides recommendations to the city council. It is the city council who may approve or deny land use applications. Moving on, item number four is the approval of the agenda. Just one item to point out, we are going to shift some things around on the agenda in hand. With that being said, I need a motion and a second to move item in new business, item A, to follow the public hearings, item A. Essentially, it's linking the concept plan for the TQ Farms with the A3 zoning to our A3 discussion to bring that up earlier in the meeting.
So moved?
I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda. These are routinely, are previously discussed items that are enacted with one motion. All that's on the consent agenda is the Planning Commission minutes from November 7th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to it first.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, open forum. Open forum is for anyone here or online that has public comments on items that are non-agenda items. These are limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here for any non-agenda items? No one's online?
There is no one online.
Perfect. All right, moving on to item number seven, council update.
Okay, so December 12th. We certified the election. We got a third quarter report, financial report, which didn't have any surprises in it. We also discussed the long-term plan. About the only change there, we agreed to move the plan for the fire station in City Hall and training facility out to 2031, based on the resident survey results. We passed EDA bylaw, or we rejected an EDA bylaw amendment. They wanted to allow members to miss meetings. So we have this rule that we put in place, I think about six months ago, that said that members of the commissions can't miss more than three meetings. They wanted that to be contingent on if that was an excused miss or not, which we didn't, we didn't do that. We awarded the bid for the north bridge of Elsie Stevens, the pedestrian walkway. And so for November 26th, later budget work session, that was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion in that, and I'll kind of cover where we ended up with that this last meeting two days ago. We did approve, you had seen the Fisher Farms IUP amendment, we did approve that. We also rejected the master plan, pretty much for the same reasons you guys did. The variance for the sign, for the quick trip sign was approved, I think without any, without, or with a lot of the things that you guys had discussed. Discuss the Parkway neighborhood, same issues that came up before you guys, and we pretty much agreed. The pull替 addition was approved, and then, let's see what was on. So the budget, let me get back to the budget for Tuesday. We did finally approve that. It was a, I want to say, just under a 12% increase. It was passed four to one, 12% increase in the levy. There were two, the two full-time firefighters, the two police officers, there was a couple part-time, I think, for parks. And, see, we had a few other things too, but I don't have it in front of me here. I don't know if you guys have any questions about those things? Nothing? I'm just going to get to the agenda so I can walk through that from yesterday.
Mayor Fisher, on the quick trip signage, yep, conversation, did you, did the council also echo the desire for a monument sign on the Dayton Parkway side?
So what we did on that was, I think they were suggesting, can you help me with that?
An ordinance amendment to increase the height of signs from eight, eight feet to 12, was it 12 or was it 16?
I think it was 16, specific to monument signs, the height of monument signs.
Right, yeah. But a monument as opposed to a pole mounted sign, yeah. I think they, they did agree that they were working with the monument, I think it was just a question of dealing with our eight feet limit, our eight foot limit. There was a vacation of some easements on the Ziegler property with their rearranging of those two properties. There was an adjustment in Riverwalk for a easement, or there was a vacation in lieu of another one, another easement that was going to be created. There was a lot of discussion, Parkway Neighborhood wants more financial assistance than we were looking at, and that was kind of pushed to see what those numbers really were. And then we had a closed meeting on the police union negotiation. That was it. Nope.
All right, moving on to item number eight, public hearings. The first item on the public hearing is a concept plan for TQ Farms.
Mr. Chair. Okay, so this, this is a, as you mentioned, it's a concept plan for TQ Farms located on Longdale Lane. With the concept plan, this is a, there's no action that's required, the idea is to solicit informal comments from the commission and the council. You know, one commissioner that says they like this, and another commissioner that says they hate that, and it's up to the applicant to figure out what does it mean, and how to adjust that for when a preliminary plot is submitted. So the next step after a concept plan is preliminary, in this case, we would do preliminary and final plan at the same time, depending on a few other scenarios that may or may not be variances involved. So this is generally, and I'm going to round up numbers, it's about a 35 acre project that consists of two parcels, there's a 15 acre parcel and 20 acre parcel. So we have a 15 acre parcel that's kind of in a, I don't know, different configuration, and then a 20 acre rectangle. What the applicant would like to do is take, is subdivide off five acres from the 15, and then combine this 10 acres with existing 20 acres. So it would go from two properties to two properties. There's no additional homes that are involved, so when we're talking about a subdivision, yes, it's a subdivision, but it's not a 100 houses compared to what we're used to talking about when we look at subdivisions. Critical issues with this, we have four different items. The first is a variance to reduce the minimum, minimum lot size from 40 acres to 5 acres. So these properties are zoned A1 agricultural, the minimum lot size is 40 acres. Second item is to reduce the variance from, variance of lot frontage from 30, 300 feet to 60 feet, and we'll go into a little bit more detail in each one of these. Third item is roadway easement, and fourth item is a mausoleum. Okay. Yep. Variance, so the first critical item on the variance, and as stated earlier, the properties are zoned A1 agricultural, in which the minimum lot size is 40 acres, meaning in order to subdivide, you have to have, into two lots, you have to have 80 acres. Because both lots, existing lots are less than 40 acres, they're legally non-conforming, they can, we can move property lines around, but we cannot reduce the property, we cannot make the lots more non-conforming than they already are, unless there's a variance that's approved for this. So at the concept plan stage, I'm not asking that the council justify or debate the merits of a variance or not, it's just, that will come later once a variance application is submitted. It's more if you have any direction for the applicant on whether or not to pursue a variance. Later on, separate but related, later on tonight, we have a discussion on creating an A3 district, which would allow a smaller lot size than 40 acres. If that A3 district is adopted, then a variance of the lot size may not be necessary. Critical issue number two is a variance to reduce the lot frontage from 300 feet to 60 feet, so lot frontage is measured at the building setback line. In this case, if five acres were subdivided off, this parcel would be landlocked except for frontage along this roadway easement. So it's 60 feet wide, 60 foot lot width, that could be resolved if, if this is planted as right-of-way to include a cul-de-sac. If including cul-de-sac, then it can avoid that variance for lot width. Third item is roadway easement. So a little history, so in 2004, I believe, this, the Duke property was five acres, and the intent was to subdivide this into two, creating this lot, which would be landlocked, but for the dedication of an easement, roadway easement to the city, that benefit both the Duke property and the Bennett property. The Bennett property already had an existing driveway access onto Longdale, and so for all practical purposes, this exists as a driveway within the public, or the city's Issues with that is, it is an easement, it is not right-of-way as it is existing, and questions that I'm looking for, some feedback from the commission as well as the council, is should the developer be required to develop, to build this as a public street, where it would be maintained by the city? And the second option is to be left as it is, and for the city to grant a limited use agreement to both properties to use it as it is. So what this would mean is the city would not maintain this at all, and it would be up to the two property owners to share that maintenance cost. Staff's recommendation is the limited use agreement. Fourth item is the mausoleum, and this is something that we still need to do some research on, so mausoleum essentially is a cemetery. This should be planted as a lot, separate lot or an outlot, as well as to provide a driveway or an access easement to a public roadway. So I'm assuming that the intent is for this property to stay in the family for many generations. If it doesn't, the mausoleum or the cemetery should be protected so that it's still accessible. We have applicants, engineers here, so any questions for the applicant or for staff? And this is a public hearing.
I got one question for staff first. I know some other cities track building entitlements, like, so for example, if you have a 40 acre, 45 acre parcel, and if this is one per 40, you have one building entitlement. Do we track building entitlements in that sense, or do we just call things non-conforming lots?
So we, first, we don't track that. So if you have a non-conforming lot, you can build on, I guess, the only exception would be if it's an outlot. So in our A2 district, for example, A1, it's minimum lot size of 40 acres, A2, it's a minimum, maximum density of one home per 40 acres, and so you have, let's say, the farmstead or the, the home that's subdivided off from the 40 acre farm, and let's say it's five acres, and then 35 acres is planted as an unbuildable outlot.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, the biggest thing is we're not tracking, so you start lots of record and, and follow the code for subdividing.
John? I'm pretty sure we do track that, because when we do splits, so we did a split at the church on Fernbrook, we keep track of the lots, maybe I misunderstood the question, but when a lot becomes, when a chunk is split off, and it's not 40, we do require somewhere that it can't get a house on it.
Sure, so I mean, there's way, I guess, I'm not sure how we've done that in the past.
I don't either.
If, if it was, you know, I remember the cemetery, I don't remember how we, we did that, if it was planted as an outlot, or if there was a deed restriction, I don't know.
Yeah, I was under the impression we simply kept track of it somewhere, but I don't know how. Because we've done that, that's not the first one we've done.
Right, and it even makes sense, maybe even with the Duke property being split off in 2004 or five acres.
It could have been.
Could have been something like that, where the other 35 was, just had no entitlement anymore.
Yep, I don't know.
Okay. If we do track that, I think that's a good thing to bring up in these future conversations with some of these parcels, just so we know we're not doing something that wasn't intended, or we need to change something that may get intended, or whatever.
One thing I forgot to mention, so we did receive two emails that were distributed to the commission prior to the meeting tonight, so, for public testimony.
And just for the record, the Quilling family is a client of our company I'm now employed for, and I've done some consulting on their properties, so, not in Dayton, or actually, most of the consulting has been outside of Dayton, because they just have homes, it's mainly with their commercial properties. But I'm going to refrain from providing specific comments about the concept plan because of that.
I don't have any questions yet.
No questions yet, I'm sure I will have some, but not yet.
All right, would the representative of the applicant like to come forward at all?
Good evening, Chair and council members, or sorry, Planning Commission members. I'm Joe Raddick, consultant for Jason Quilling. I put together the application, and I just wanted to mention a few things that we talked about with Jason, so he's been a resident for 30 years of the city of Dayton, and he bought that property to the west, that 20 acre piece, several years ago. It's a separate parcel, there is easement access to the parcel. Can I step up?
Sure.
So there's the existing public roadway easement through the Duke property and the old Bennett property, which is now part of the Quilling property, and then there's an easement, a 60 foot easement over this property as well, that provides access to this parcel. So it feels like there's legal access to that parcel, so that what he's trying to do here is potentially, he could do it without any variance, he could build a house.
He could build a house on the property as, the 20 acres as it is today.
Right, okay. So that's the ultimate goal, but what he wants to do is, his daughter lives in the house next to the Duke property, he wants to split off that five acres, give that to his daughter, keep the 10 acres with the 20 acres, combine them, and just build his estate. So we're not talking about building additional houses, more than what can be built on there today, it's really just about reorganizing the land to, you know, make it more usable for him and his family. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, that I think regardless of what the city allows us to do, his goal is to build the house, that's what he wants. There's other goals he has here, he does want to combine the properties so that he has 30 acres, and, and do the improvement that he's showing, so we've done the wetland delineations, he's been planting trees out there, he wants to convert it into like an estate property, you know, right now, it's kind of agricultural land, it's been degraded over the years, people have been dumping things in those wetlands, so he wants to improve the property, as you can see what he's showing there. And, yeah, that's essentially what the ask is, is to provide some option to split the property, not creating any more lots, but split the property so that they can reorganize it, so he can give his daughter the five acre parcel and retain the rest. They are planning about a $1 million improvement to his daughter's property, and the home that he's building, it'll, you know, probably equate to about a $3 million improvement back there, so it will increase property taxes as well. And the mausoleum, yeah, he has an attorney that's looking into that, it's kind of one of those things, it's an idea, but it's not a contingency, right? We can live without it, he's looking into it, but it's, I don't want that to be the reason to hold things up. And then I know there's some discussion on the roadway easement, it's our opinion and our attorney's opinion that we have the right to use that easement, it was, 30 feet was granted from his daughter's property and 30 feet from the Duke property, it's granted as a public roadway easement, and if, technically, if the road were to be built, the Dukes would have to pay half, and the Quillings would have to pay half, we're not suggesting that, the Quillings would be happy to pay for the entire improvement, whatever's necessary there, we're not trying to put that burden on the Dukes, but our opinion is, is we have the right to use that for our land.
Any questions for Joel from the commission members?
I would say I had a hard time, it took, it took me longer than it should have to wrap my head around exactly what was being asked, and, and, like, what is, like, the existing use, like, when I look online, when I drive by, versus what it's proposed to be, don't seem to match up. So that was a little bit of a confusion for me, and looking at where, like, where you have the road drawn, where the actual physical driveway is on the property map, like, a lot of things aren't just not lining up for me, and so I'm having a hard time kind of wrapping my head, like, you have this beautiful road with trees on the other side, but the actual existing driveway is very much closer to the other property line, and, and part of their driveway is actually in the easement, which I, I don't know nearly enough about easements, I have more to learn there. But yeah, there's just, I just, I had a lot of questions, a lot of this just doesn't make sense to me, as someone, like, what are some of these outbuildings for, and they seem to be rather randomly placed, and not in any way to perform connected to other properties and then there, or buildings, and then there's a lot of large equipment being stored there. And then, you know, you make reference to existing trees, but I don't see any evidence of existing trees, so I just had a lot of questions that I don't quite have answers to.
You want, you want to go one over, one at a time?
Sure, yes.
I can speak to the, the equipment, I know that, I've read the emails that we received from the Dukes and the Vargas's, and there is, there was concerns about the construction equipment, or the trailers parked on that property. So he, if you guys remember, I was here probably about a year ago, he was going to buy a piece of that property in the Dayton Fields Development where Endpoint is now, or not Endpoint.
It's still for sale, but...
Yes. The property on 121st, the new 121st went in between Brockton and French Lake Road.
West side of French Lake.
On the south side of 121st, he was in here for an approval, and we actually got approved to build a 40,000 square foot office warehouse for his building, QT, or Quality Trusted Commercial Roofing. He currently has a facility in Brooklyn, Brooklyn Park, but he was outgrowing that. However, just recently, he was able to work with one of the neighboring properties to acquire some additional land. So this year, he's been clearing that land and making it ready to be able to house more of his construction equipment and trailers. So that was a temporary condition here, he has no intent of parking those trailers here long-term. And again, I don't want to get bogged down in, in potential discussions on the use of the property, but that was a temporary, a temporary use, that he was just moving those trailers out of his current business, so that he could build up this new outside storage yard that he bought from the neighbors. So those will not be there, he doesn't want them there, he wants to build this beautiful estate to, for him and his family and his grandkids that now live next door to enjoy, it's, it's not going to be a contractor yard, I know people were concerned about that, that is not the intent at all. He wants to improve the property, plant the trees, restore the wetlands, create the prairies. He did put in the paved area, that's a tennis court, he's an avid tennis player, so that's a tennis court and sport court, he put in the golfing green, so it's, it's really an outdoor kind of active area, you know, a lot of folks in this neighborhood have pools and sport courts, that's what he's building here, it's not a commercial contractor yard or anything of the sort. And I think we, by ordinance, I mean, they, we can't operate as a contractor yard.
Well, it requires a separate permit.
That's a separate issue, is my point, is, that's not what we're here to discuss today. If, if you guys have concerns, you know, we're happy to address them, but I think that's kind of a separate discussion than what we're here for today.
So another question, I need to know more about the easement and the driveway, and what I see on, like, the property maps online versus what I see on the drawings don't, don't line up, really. And so, like, in, in particular, it looks like part of the driveways, or not the driveway, like, the actual...
The existing driveway?
The existing driveway is not in the middle by any stretch, and...
No, it's not, it's actually entirely on the southerly 30 feet of that easement.
Yeah.
But to be fair, there's nothing in the easement document that says it has to reside in the middle, it's, there's a 60 foot swath of publicly dedicated easement, and that the axis has to reside within that 60 feet. I think the reason it is where it is, is because that easement was originally put in place for the split of the Duke property, which was a five acre property, and now it's two, two acre properties with less the easement.
Joe, you had mentioned earlier that Quillings would be willing, or have the intention of, of, I'll say, reconstructing that driveway?
Yeah, absolutely.
On the centerline?
Mm-hmm. And the way the easement document reads is that if it were to be built to a city road standard, like, it suggests that it would be a split cost between the two Duke properties and the previous Bennett property, or now the Quilling property. We're not going to enforce that, we would be happy to build it to whatever standard the city wanted to access the property, because we don't want to burden the Because we don't want to burden the Dukes. I mean, we understand it's a problem. But I know, John, you had stated that we were looking at a license agreement versus plating the right-of-way and doing a cul-de-sac. It's one property. It's one house, like.
Yep.
It feels a little.
Oh, well.
Onerous to build a road with a cul-de-sac for one house.
So I guess staff's opinion is to, I'll say dedicate right-of-way with a cul-de-sac and then just build it as a driveway.
Okay, so that it would be a future option if needed.
50 years from now, it's, it's there if it's needed.
Yep. And that certainly could be done. I think the easement's already there, so that's, it's a little bit of a, it's already kind of been put in place. So it would be layering on top of what's already there. So would you intend to, to take 30 feet of right-of-way from the Dukes then? And convert that to right-of-way?
Ideally, but that's not part of the plot, so it's not something we can require.
So we would just dedicate our half?
Right.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I, I think that's an option.
You wouldn't be able to take more from the Dukes because it's already up against their house.
Well, we can't take anything because it's outside the plot boundary.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's nothing to say that that driveway couldn't be, the road couldn't be re-centered. It's just the way they built it, it was south of the center.
Yeah, within the easement, it could go anywhere in there, assuming grading works.
Correct.
It's just the, the back Duke property like is pretty tight in there, right? So I mean, any reconstruction is a major impact to their, the function of their current drive.
Right.
So with the division, you'd end up with a five-acre property with a home. Then you'd have a 10-acre property in the middle that does not look like there would be a home.
That gets combined with the 20.
That gets combined with the 20s.
So it would be a 30-acre parcel. So no additional parcels, it's just kind of rearranged.
And then you would have multiple buildings on, on that property.
Well, the one outbuilding and then the house and garage by the house.
So.
Yeah, but well, the, the maintenance building, whatever that is, number four, up by the property. It's already there, but that's an out, that's a separate structure that's there. And then you've got the, the house, a garage, and then I don't know if the mausoleum counts as a structure or not.
Yep.
John, was the, there was a question about the easement type. It wasn't a traditional road easement. Is that clarified there?
The language is a city roadway drainage and utility easement.
I have it right here. Public roadway drainage, utility, and other pertinent purposes over, under, and across that part of the Duke property and Bennett property.
I assume the house, if it was built where it's proposed, would be on well and septic?
Correct. All these properties in this area are well and septic.
Yeah, there's no pipe back there anytime soon, right?
Right, correct.
So the utilities, is it through there, it's really for power?
Yep.
Internet service or whatever.
And it's private utilities.
Yeah.
Sir, did you have other questions besides those two?
Well, some of them were just, oh, you mentioned existing trees in the plan. Number 14 says existing trees. But on, when I look at the map, it doesn't appear to have existing trees.
Yeah, it looks like some kind of orchard or something.
Yeah, but yet it doesn't, there's no, I don't see any orchard. And it, and the neighbor, and some of the responses we got from people who aren't able to be here were that trees were actively taken down. And in some cases, they were starting to take down trees on other people's properties. So that just was a disconnect for me.
Yeah, I, I'm not so sure about, well, I know for sure that the trees, the orchard trees are not there. Those are not there. And I, and this was done by a landscape architect and it was, they maybe mislabeled that. Because that, I think that would be, those should be labeled proposed trees, not existing trees. But yeah, he did take down some of the trees by the homestead in anticipation of building the house. I know the intention wasn't to take any trees down on any other person's property. And he has spent quite a bit of money surveying the boundaries of this property and has put in posts along the boundary. So again, I wasn't out there, but I'd be surprised if they were taking trees on somebody else's property just because I've walked this land multiple times and it's pretty well-monumented. So if it was, it was certainly a mistake. It was not intentional. But he has cleared a few trees on the homestead site, the, the number eight there, the house site up on the hill. And he's been taking down undesirable trees throughout the property as well because he wants to plant back native species.
And this is not really, it's just my curiosity. Giant amounts of land, and yet all of these houses are on like as close to the property lines as you can get. Why? Like why not give yourself a little bit of breathing room?
Well, there's a nice knob right there. And it's, it's a really beautiful spot. That's the high point. And then it looks over that wetland to the west and then looks over the land to the north.
So elevation and topography?
Yeah, it's an elevation thing, yeah, for sure.
So that's, that was not a deal breaker. It was just, at first glance, I'm like, you have 30 acres.
No, I can see why you would say that, but that is the spot for the house.
That's, that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, now that I'm looking at the topography, that makes sense. I would like to hear if there are people here, because this is a public forum.
If there's no more questions for Joe, you can, maybe we'll have some more for you when we're done, but.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, at 7:06, I am going to open the public hearing on this matter. If anyone here is, wants to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address.
Jason Duke, 14661 Longdale Lane, Dayton.
Jason, could you, the microphone doesn't pick up. If you could just repeat your name.
Jason Duke, 14661 Longdale Lane, Dayton. Hello. Hello. I wasn't planning on being here, but I got out of my daughter's thing, so I made it quick. The proposed road would impact my house, my use, pretty significantly, I'll say. There has been a lot of construction traffic for the past, since Quilling had purchased the property from Bennett. It's constant. My wife works from home. It's all day, in and out, there's people. So it's, it's going to put a burden on use of my driveway, my road. A utility was planted directly like on the, just on the Quilling or Bennett side of the property line over the summer, which kind of, I don't know if a road can be put over utilities now, but I guess my suggestion for this whole thing is that the road needs to be split property line. Like centered on the property line is what I would prefer happen if this is going to go through. I don't know what else to say. I, I wasn't planning on being here. I've submitted some stuff that I hope everyone has seen. But I don't know, I don't know what else to say, honestly.
Just to clarify for you, Jason, tonight's just a concept plan too. So no actions being, or recommendations really taken by the planning commission. Then the concept plan's going to go to the council. And likewise, they're not going to take action. They're going to give feedback. And then, then the applicant, if they're still willing to go forward, that's when they'll come forward for actual action.
All right, all right. Yeah, I guess I don't have a lot to say except I don't, I don't. Yeah, I'm kind of disappointed that this is what it's coming down to. But it's, I received today, I've received a, a purchase agreement from Mr. Quilling trying to buy my property from his attorney as well. So there's a, they're trying to buy me out of this as well. So I don't know. It's a, it's not a fun time. I plan on raising my kids here, staying here at least till they graduate. But I'm kind of getting forced out, it feels like, by this. So I don't know. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Is anyone else here to speak on this matter?
My name is Jenny Vargas and I live at 14581 Longdale Lane. So I have the property that basically is kind of like the tea point of where he wants to put his house. And I butt up to the Dukes. So yeah, right there, that's mine. So kind of the same thing, I kind of opened this up and, I mean, obviously I've only had like a week to really kind of look at this. And I voiced some of my concerns. I don't understand the split, first of all. I don't understand why it's not, why he wouldn't just give his daughter 10 acres and it would fall in line with all the other pretty much existing properties on the street. It's the same thing. I kind of was like, oh, wow, you have 30 some acres and we need to put the house right up to my tree line. And then, you know, the cemetery, I sent a picture of like, you know, after he cleared out all those trees in that area. Pretty much from my master bedroom, it's right there. And, and all the people on Thicket Lane, it also would, they would see it too. Because those trees are not there. So I don't know.
Thicket Lane is right off the.
Yeah, Thicket Lane is behind. And I can now see, since he's cleared the trees, I can now see the houses back there. Not so much in the summer when the trees are, but for sure right now in the winter, which is not a big deal. And like I expressed, like people get to do what they want on their own properties. And that's, that's totally fine. It's just, I always, I don't know, I just have a bad feeling and I just question the intentions. Because I know he said that it wasn't intentional, that they started cutting down my trees, but it was. I mean, literally, it was during COVID. I think it was either 2020 or 2021. And I happened to be running late and my husband was working from home. And we're watching all the trees fall down and we're like, okay, he's clearing out trees. And like I said in my email, he does beautiful things to his property. He does. Like I will not deny that. But all of a sudden, we were like, man, that, all those trees on that back line are on our property. You can go back there and you can easily see the, the sticks in like, in there. So like I can see they're all in my yard. And I'm like, go back there! And you go talk to him. So my husband got in the four-wheeler and the guy that was working back there, he's like, oh, so what are you doing? He said, oh, well, Jason Quilling told me to clear, you know, the, clear out the like brush, basically. And then all of a sudden, a big tree fell down and he's like, well, that one's kind of a big one. So what, and he goes, these are all in my yard. Why are you even touching them? And so then the guy called, I don't know, maybe he called Quilling and we had just moved in in 2019. So A, I'm not here to start anything with any neighbor. And, you know, my husband and I were just like, whatever, we caught it. Nothing bad happened. Let's move on and hopefully it's all, and it's been fine. So it wasn't a big deal. There was only one more instance where I was like, okay, what is going on? So after he cleared all these trees, he had this like big, huge, whatever you stick the trees in, that mulches them up, that big machine came. And all of a sudden, I see it like driving up my driveway or up, up the side of our driveway, like next to the Hoffmans, which is the property next to me. So the farmer usually kind of goes right, kind of on that side and he drives up and he farms behind our yard. And so I ran back there and I stopped the guy and I said, well, what are you doing? Driving like through my yard with this machine? And he's like, oh, well, you know, Quilling told me this was a farm access road. And I said, is it a farm access road? Like I am not under the impression that my yard is like for the public to get to their, you know, areas. So I kind of was like, I, I'm pretty sure this is private property. And like if Jason needed to like send that machine up, like I thought he would, probably should have just stopped over and said, hey, you know, do you mind? Because, I mean, that's typically how I am with my other neighbors. You know, it's not a big deal. But when these things happen, and now I'm just nervous that you give a guy an inch, he takes a mile. You know, and so there's that kind of, I don't know, worry I have about the whole concept. And like, if that's truly the concept, awesome, right? Like I love beautiful properties. It makes my property. But I have a pool, I put in a sport court. I don't want to stare at a cemetery, you know? I bought the place from my parents. So it's, you know, I've been there probably longer than he has. So yeah, I mean, I know everybody who used to live in that, all that area. So yeah, thank you. Yes, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just, I had one more thing. When I was driving in here, I was listening and I heard something about the Duke property being a five-acre parcel. It was never a five-acre parcel. It's always been split property. It was just, the easement was granted till I would drive to put in for the back property. So it wasn't any condition of splitting property or anything. There's always been two separate parcels there. So there's been a misconception with a lot of people on that, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
My name's Ernie Borgon. I live at 14821 Longdale Lane, next to Jason. And I had some concerns as far as the north, I'm on the north side of him there.
Are you north of Quilling's house?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're right up here. So this is Jason, where Jason Quilling lives and then you're just north of it.
Right, just north.
Okay.
And since we've got some issues with runoff, you know, coming through our property, there's a culvert ongoing under ticket that is either plugged up, but the water isn't flowing through. And so it backs up onto my property, you know, which is fine. But, you know, I think it's, should be looked at. But I don't understand, I got this in the mail and it didn't come with a legend, so I didn't know what all the numbers were on there. So that's, is there a legend for this or?
I did notice in the planning package we received, there were some numbers that then referenced what those numbers meant.
Yeah. I, I didn't get a copy of it and, you know, it's, I don't understand what the far corner up there, it looks like it's a trail and a cul-de-sac with a house sitting there, you know, right next to my property.
Sure, if, if I could interrupt for a second. Joe, can you come up to the screen and just kind of point out what, what is what?
Absolutely.
No, I just don't understand what.
And to be clear, your property's to the north of.
Yeah, I think.
Right there, correct.
These are existing, these are existing buildings. So it's just the existing house. That's that big barn and the other shed next to it. And this is another horse barn back here. So there's no new improvements planned for the property adjacent to you. So the only new improvements is, this is already existing. So it's really what we're talking about is the house and garage.
So what is the, can I ask, what is like supposed to be the road, the, right there? Yeah, because obviously that's a parking lot, which you said is a tennis court. But it also has gravel outside of it where all those trailers are.
Yeah, so like I said, a landscape architect put this together about a year ago and to kind of just start the vision, I guess.
Okay.
And then Jason kind of rented from there. And I don't, we haven't compiled the new kind of final plan, but he did put in the golf green right here and the sport court here.
So it's the parking lot pavement, but then there's gravel outside. So what is the purpose of the gravel that's all the damage there?
Like I said, I don't know that we have a final plan of what everything's going to be. Some of it was just staging for the interim condition while he's under construction. Like I said, he's acquiring more property in Brooklyn Park for his business. And while that's under construction, he's been using this area as temporary storage right around.
So behind that barn then, up there, it looks like there's a trail going.
This is just, oh, let's see.
Going back.
Going like this.
Yeah, back around.
Yeah, and these are just kind of depictions. I think this is probably an existing, is that existing where they ride their horses or, or what? I'm not entirely sure what that is. But it's not going to be a paved trail or anything like that. It was just a, probably a walking trail or something. But nothing to say.
Are you going to have an updated, like actual, like there for the next meeting?
We, on the survey, it shows what's, this is just a conceptual to show more the house. But on the surveys that were submitted as part of the package, it does show the actual improvements there.
Just for clarity, like for.
Here, 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 this is that gravel area you were talking about and then the golf green. So we, we just had an updated survey done about a month ago.
So the conversations that are coming from the audience, they don't get picked up? So the conversations that are coming from the audience, they don't get picked up by the microphone at all, so if, if, if you have. You know, yeah, thank you.
Well, anyway, back a few years, I, when my daughter and son, back in two thousand eight, when my daughter and son lost their house and, and, uh, I was trying to take my eleven acres and split it and I was denied. And, uh, and because it was at the time that we were grandfathered into, I believe it was ten acre lots. And then that got changed to forty acre parcels or something like that, so it's just, uh, you know, I'm not trying to deny, but you know, what's, what's right is right though.
Do you have a, this is because of this following discussion next, if you could split your property today, would that be something that interests you?
Not anymore. But at the time when money was tight and, you know, it was, was a thought and we did and checked into it and stuff, so, you know, it's, uh, it's a nice neighborhood and, you know, that's, we bought the property because we wanted privacy and stuff, so I guess I'll wait and see what, what happens and go from there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here on this matter?
I have just kind of a comment.
Could you please come forward, state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Grant Osgood, and I live at one four seven zero zero Thicket Lane, so I back up, my property backs up to the whole one side there. And my only comment is, Jason, they're good neighbors and like them, but when Jason bought the property here, the farm field, he, I'll get that here, they added a new drain tile in that. And my yard has a swale that goes through it and then an underground pipe that goes back to the little creek or pond, whatever that drainage easement is there, or drain it, not a easement, but the drainage path. And once they put the new drain tile in, now every spring, my backyard floods. And it would be nice in this whole thing to get that addressed. And I'm concerned if they do much more improvement, you know, because we're downhill from that, that will get more water than we already get now. And so I have two pastures there and the one, probably thirty feet of the one in the spring, we can't use for anything. Where before it was not that way. And I don't know a hundred percent if that did it or there's something downstream that's doing it, but it seems like it was right after the drain tile was added.
Thank you.
Jack Burnins, one four seven seven zero Thicket Lane, I'm right next to Grant. And I wasn't gonna speak because I'm not super opposed to the concept, other than maybe the lot split thing seems a little odd, but, um, I, I just echo Grant's comments, like my entire backyard floods now, every spring. So I don't know if it was the drain tile that they put in the nineteen acres that they bought or whether it's got more to do with what, uh, Ernie?
Ernie?
Yeah. What he said where, because it, it all drains out to where Jason lives and then goes under Thicket Lane. And that's been a really wet problem area for a long time. And, um, so uh, just echo those comments. I'm, like I said, I'm not, I wasn't planning on speaking and I'm not necessarily opposed to the concept per se. I can see why others are, but just that, that's my only comment.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other comments from the public, I am gonna close the public hearing. Seven twenty-four. Um, commissioner members, do you have any thoughts on the concept plan or the critical issues?
The, uh, one civil plan that you had up that shows that one. So you've got major paving that comes in the front five acre property, what, what could be the front property. And then that paving continues to the, to the barn that's already there, or on property and then continues all the way to the back where the homestead would be.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's all connected within the Quilling property, it's not even using the, the access road there based on this. Like, I wonder if there's a way to, to accomplish that without having to make improvements or change that easement, which would then affect the Duke property, um, to be able to just manage it all within, within their property. Obviously, there's a lot of land and, uh, in this, in this diagram, it works. All right.
Yeah, so if, if going that route, staff's position would still be to dedicate the right of way to allow future construction of road, whether it ever gets built is another matter, but if, if, um, this access all came from, I'm gonna say, if, uh, the larger Quilling property had a, uh, easement on the five acre, to use the existing driveway, um, that could work.
But wouldn't we only need to build roads when the day it actually got subdivided for denser development? And that's when they would have to come before us.
Have the right of way to not build the road.
Right, well, when they split their property, they would have to dedicate. If they choose to do that, they would have to dedicate right of way. At that point in time, for it.
Yes, so the issue is that the new, um, the new property is lanelocked, which is not allowed. So that's the issue that.
Yeah, and Paul's saying potential easement through their.
Own property.
It's not really landlocked, there's already a driveway, like they're already getting there.
There is a drive that allows access to them.
So it's, it's not even, it isn't, it's there, it's already existing. I think that was where I was having such a hard time wrapping my head around, because all the things, like nothing matched up, right? Like there's this image of what's really here, there's this image of what's gonna be, but they're not the same. And then the maps online aren't quite up. So clearly, a lot of these things have happened very recently, because they're not even in the twenty twenty-four imaging. So it was just hard to like wrap your head around, okay, what actually has happened, what is planning to happen? Well, how come the plans don't match what's actually happened in, within the year, because they're not on the map already? So I don't, I, I don't see why they can't just use what they've already done and to get to this property and just make an easement there. And I don't, I don't like splitting off into, into five acres. I think you could do a split, a longer rectangle that's like nine point nine seven, closer to ten, closer to our target goal and still, you know, have a larger, a larger, um, space that's a little closer to the road, I could see that. Um, but yeah, I just, like I said, I just, I, at this point, nothing makes sense. Like, I'm kind of with some of the other people, like, none of this is making sense to me. I would like a very clear plan that actually matches what reality is.
Sure.
Um, and not a fictional plan of a future that does not match the future that has already started to roll out without permission.
So to, to provide a little bit of clarity, so with the subdivision, we're just looking at property lines. So the, the, you know, whether the grove of trees is existing or proposed, it, like, that doesn't matter.
Well, I guess for me, it's more the driveways, right? Because the whole point of this easement is they don't have access, but when you look at the actual survey, they do. They've already put in driveways, so there are already driveways here. And the driveways that are already here that they did within the last year, because they're not on the twenty twenty-four aerial images, if you look online, so they've been put in within a year, don't match up with the things that they should, told us they were going to do.
Concept plan.
Yeah, like, none of it matches. And that's where I'm stuck, to know what is the truth and what is the actual plan? Because maybe they have way more money than I do, but I would not have sunk that much money into paving and putting gravel in for driveway areas that I hadn't, I intended to immediately turn around and turn back into native prairie. Like, I wouldn't do that. I don't, but maybe they have way more money than I do. But I would not invest the money to put improved surfaces in to drive on if my actual goal was to turn it back into prairie. So that's where, like I said, I'm having just a lot of disconnects between the information I'm given. And we're not making any actions, we're just giving feedback. That's my feedback.
Yeah, I'd echo that. I mean, it's a concept plan review and they provided a concept plan that needs updating, right? Like, it's just, there's a lot of concerns. I mean, I also think that, I mean, we're hearing from a lot of neighbors that just have concerns because there's a lot of vagueness to what's going on here and it just seems like some communication amongst neighbors and, um, you know, people live out in this area because they want separation, they want the, the rural feel, they want to build lookout at trees and farmland, right? I mean, that's, that's why we live in Dayton and, um, at least in this part of Dayton, for sure. And so being mindful of where you place structures, where you plant trees, how you screen things, like, I mean, I would think too, that they, if they're gonna build this beautiful house back there, they don't want to look out the front, look at other houses, they want to see nature. So I think just being respectful of the neighbors that are out there, being respectful of, um, the, the land. I mean, this area might not ever get developed with large developments, right? I mean, this might be an area that stays this way for a very long time and, you know, I bought an acre of land and the first thing I did is I planted a hundred trees, you know, like, because we want to see nature. I don't know what Mr. Quilling's end goal is here. Um, I think it'd be nice to get a more updated concept plan that actually represents that. Yeah, I don't want to see an impact to the, to the Duke property, more than necessary, there's a right to have a road there. Um, whatever can be done to minimize that impact, his house is right up against that, that property line, right? So I mean, anything that's done there is gonna impact your driveway and the use of your property and I, I have a hard time seeing like how what's already happening is gonna change based on what they're showing here. I mean, it's still a single family residence farther back. If he's running his construction company out of there, that's a different thing right now, that's, it's a lot of trucks and if that's what they're doing right now, like, I don't know if that's.
Requires an interim use permanent home extension business.
Yeah. Um, and that would have a huge impact, right? If that's a real thing and long-term thing, hopefully it's not, it doesn't sound like it would be, but, if it's just a single family residence where you have a couple of car trips a day, then, you know, maybe it's not a big deal, but um, there's just not that information provided to us to really understand. But if that road's gonna get rebuilt, I would agree, center it and tree line it and someday it could be a nice amenity, but right now, it's hard to know what's going on.
Um, as I mentioned earlier, I'm gonna just refrain from feedback on the concept plan, but I do want to add a couple of comments on the critical issues that staff brought up. And commissioners, if you have any feedback on the four critical issues, I think staff would appreciate it. Uh, the first one is the variance to reduce the minimum lot size to forty acres to five acres. This is the one that I don't think is really concept plan related, I think it's more of a standard to the city. I would agree that we can't subdivide this property unless we amend the A three district to allow for it. Like, I am, I'm not in favor of variances just to split things because people come forward to, to want it. Like, if we're gonna do it, let's make it consistent so everyone can do it. I don't know if you guys have any feedback on that?
Yeah, I think I'd agree with that, that.
I want the larger conversation about what, what that means.
Yeah, A three, exactly. It's gotta be allowed in A three before you.
Yes, yeah. And then it, and it applies to everybody, not just.
Right, whoever's, yep, in the A three district, yep.
Yes, so.
Uh, the other comment was a variance to reduce the minimum lot front inch to thirty to sixty feet. In my opinion, this is more concept plan related than it is a functional issue from a standpoint of looking at it. Three hundred to sixty, just the way it lays out, but I don't know if you guys have feedback on that?
I think it goes back to like, what's the purpose of it, like.
Because John, when you.
It's a border of the variance.
Yeah, when you, when you, can you illustrate on the map again what you were talking about, because I just did a quick, where's the sixty feet?
The roadway easement is sixty feet wide, and so this becomes the frontage of this lot onto, uh.
Yeah, that's what I mean by, it's kind of a technicality of code related to what you're trying to accomplish versus a huge variance of going from forty to five acres.
Right, if, if a cul-de-sac is, or if right of way is dedicated as a cul-de-sac, then now you have the three hundred feet around the, the cul-de-sac.
That doesn't really matter to me, to be honest.
Yeah, I think, well, I know, but if we, if we have the larger discussion about the A three and lot size and if we agree that five acre lots are okay, then by default, this becomes.
Yes.
If you wrote dead ends to your property, you're only gonna have sixty feet, that is what it is.
To land my property that just has that, so that one doesn't bother me as much.
Uh, the next item was item number three, right of way dedication, which essentially there was the two options of building the road to city standards or, like, staff recommended to, well, I guess there's a third option, is we just don't prove anything, I don't know if we can do that, because I think we need to understand more. Well, we can't really give a feedback on that, because we need to understand the legality of what's allowing the easement.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but the options were the limited access road or build a city street.
If it's a single family resident only in the back, I don't know what the benefit of having them build it to a city street standard would be, that's only promoting
Yeah.
more use or people driving down and turning around and.
Yeah, getting lost or being nosy and wanting to.
Yeah, I'd rather it stay as vigorous as possible to help the Duke families, you know, so they don't have extra traffic.
I guess my bigger concern there is how that requires a certain amount of like working together cordially and I, that doesn't seem to be happening currently. So, I mean, that's the argument for having the city do it, because then the city does it, you know what I mean? Like, if, if it's a road, it's a road, it's the city's responsibility and you don't have to like your neighbor and you don't have to work with them. But if it's a shared driveway, you have to work with your neighbor to maintain it and that seems to be currently, uh, maybe.
Typically, the cost is shared fifty fifty, but if one person wants to do something a lot more frequently than the next person, it can be an issue and it's just a difference of opinion, how stuff needs to be done.
Yeah, so which is one of the reasons why using the already existing improved roadway, like, they've already put in roads, according to the survey. So just to use that.
So is, does, do the Quillings use that road at all right now? I mean, there's a fence that goes, blocks it, right?
The fence goes right across, the fence ends at the.
Sorry, I'm, I'm asking a question in the, in the audience and then he can't be heard, so I apologize.
No.
Okay, so the, Mr. Duke responded, no, yeah, so it's essentially a private drive at this point in time. And you take care of all the snow removal and.
So I think that's one of my questions about easements and maintenance, and this is where I need to know more, but I have vague memories, because I was a child, that there was an easement on my parents' property, um, for another property. But like, once a year, they had to officially formally close it to that other neighbor so that they couldn't use it that day to like make sure we did, I don't know, like I said, I was a child, I have very vague memories of this. What I, my takeaway was easements get kind of confusing and there's a lot of weird legal loopholes and you have to be very careful and they're not straightforward and it's not just like, this is the way it is, which is why I'm like, I need to know a lot more about this easement before I can have a, an informed decision.
I think the question that I would like answered to help inform people is to our attorney is, given it's an easement granted to the city and it's for public roadway, is if it becomes essentially a limited access road, shared driveway, what obligation does a city have from a maintenance perspective of helping two property owners?
Sure.
Are we, are we, are we the one responsible saying you guys split it fifty fifty? Are they responsible for figuring it out?
In the easement, all the maintenance is on, you know, this is going back to two thousand and four, all the maintenance is, is on the Duke and the Dukes and the Bennetts, so none for the city.
And so currently, this easement benefits the city, so I'm just talking aloud, I'm not saying it's the way it is. But generally, because I bought a property, I had an easement for a hunting property and that, even though the easement went across my land, it didn't benefit me. And so we had to redo the language. So to me, it seems like we might have to ask our attorney is, hey, do we need to add the Quillings as a beneficiary of this easement too? Because really, it's providing access to their property.
Sure, yep.
And in the process of doing that, that's when you can maybe talk about a maintenance agreement between the parties involved, since it is on the Duke's property. Ultimately, it's gonna benefit another property if it's approved. Uh, any other comments on the driveway? Then we get to move on to the last critical issue, which I don't know how to really address, but the cemetery, see you. Any thoughts that you guys want to share to help the applicant and staff?
Um, so I guess. So I guess I, I think part of it is like what's a mausoleum versus a, like when, when I hear cemetery, I think a lot of dead people from a lot of different families. Like that's what it means to me, like to have a cemetery, right? Where like having a dedicated, so my niece died of cancer and my, her mom, my sister wanted to put up a little memorial area for her on some land that my parents own. And like, but that's not a mausoleum, right? Like that's, like, but that's not a public thing. Like that's just for our family and it's just for now. And quite frankly, I mean, it's not like generations and generations are gonna care about this because one of your comments is if this is like a public thing, if this property changes hands, would the descendant of who was ever in the cemetery still need to have access to it? And so I think I need to know more about like, is this just a small private thing for like family right now that is not meant to be like long-term? And that, I'm just, I need to know, I need to know more, I guess, about what that means.
To help you out and myself, because I just looked it up. A mausoleum is an external freestanding building constructed as a monument enclosing the burial chamber of a deceased person or people. So I imagine that the question I guess would be to the applicant when they come back forward, if they want this is are you envisioning little, little places to put ashes? Are you envisioning places to put caskets? I don't know. Yeah, I'm assuming it's gonna be ashes is my guess, but I don't want to make that assumption. And then if so, like what size of building are they talking about?
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify just for the record, when this item does come back in the A one district, cemeteries by definition in the zoning ordinance, which includes mausoleums, would require conditional use permit review. So ideally that information would be provided at time of conditional use permit request. So we'd have that within a project narrative to get an understanding of that intended use for a mausoleum under that conditional use permits.
Okay. Yeah. So I guess that's the feedback that we're, we would give the applicant is they come back in more details to better to help understand in the actual subdivision plating process. All right, this is not an action item. So we are moving on to agenda item.
The shifted one.
Number, we're, we're moving on to agenda item to discuss the A three agricultural district.
Thank you. So I'm starting out this conversation of how did we get that here? And, you know, preference against, what I'm looking for, the, the commission is just comments and direction. I'm thinking this is gonna be a slower process. It's going to take several months to get through. So. Okay. So how did we get here? So we have, currently we have two agricultural, well, actually three, but I'm gonna simplify to two. There's the A one agricultural district, which has a minimum lots, lot size of forty acres. And then we have the A two district, which is a minimum den, or maximum density of one home per forty acres. The A two district is not too common. The general idea with this is you have a forty acre parcel with an existing home. I want to make it clear that it's, it's an existing home. My understanding is oftentimes it's difficult to get a mortgage on farmland that has a home. And so the idea of the A two district is you could split off, in this case, two and a half acres and then plant the remaining farmland as an outlot that's unbuildable. So it's still one home per forty acres.
This would bring up the whole building entitlement thing.
Yes.
So if you had a forty-three acre parcel, split off two and a half acres. So you know, originally you only had one building acre. The other technically, if we were counting building entitlements, what's split off would not be buildable because the entitlement went to that home.
Yes. That's a very good point. Thank you, man.
From a mortgage standpoint, you can't, can't get mortgages on raw land.
Yeah, you can.
Well, not like, but like, not like the average, the average buyer, because that was when we were first looking, that was why we had to look at things that had buildings on them because I could not get a regular, because they won't touch anything that-
Higher loan to value ratios.
Yeah. And so in order to get ours, we had to do a contract for deed. That was the only way we could make our swing. So that-
Banks don't give mortgages and cities do, or variances, I mean. So, yeah. In June twenty twenty-four, we had a concept plan for the Shani property, which is located on the northwest side of Lake Laura. Lake Laura, Laura Lake. I'm gonna call it Lake Laura. So this, the concept plan was for an unsued, you know, well and septic development. It had a positive response from both the planning commission and the city council. The council's direction was to pursue an ordinance amendment that would allow this to, to continue. So using Thicket Lane as an example, this is what the council wants to see more of in Dayton. So that, we then had the conversation with the Met Council of how can we make this work? Is it possible to take a portion of Dayton outside of the metropolitan urban services area? The Met Council is very clear that the answer is no. The future of Dayton is sewer development. However long it takes, we've got about enough land for a hundred years of development at the rate that we're going right now. We have, you know, a number of landowners that aren't, you know, this, within our sewer staging plan, much of this area is in the twenty forty and post twenty fifty sewer staging plan. We have a number of landowners that would like to develop sooner than thirty or forty years from now. And we have buyers that would like to have rural lots. The Met Council's agreement, and I should back up a little bit. Within the Met Council regulations, they would allow ten acre lots. We are more restrictive in our A one district. We're one per forty. The Met Council would allow, you're using interflexible standards to allow a density of one home per ten acres. So you can have, you know, you might have a lot that's five acres, another lot that's fifteen, but it still averages to one per ten. Okay. So that, that's where we're at at the moment. The intent of the A three district is to preserve rural character, to encourage hobby farms and provide an alternative to sewer development in Dayton. So as the commission and everyone is know, we have a lot of development going on in Dayton. They're on typically small quarter acre lots. With the A three district, there needs to be a clear understanding that we're calling this an interim land use, not, not to be confused, confused with the interim use permit. Interim land use meaning that the one per ten averaging is temporary until such time as regional sewers are available. And then those landowners would be, would have the opportunity to subdivide into sewer development. Practically, from a practical standpoint, that's going to take many decades to get there. So the questions for the commission tonight is number one is to define the A three district boundary and two is to establish a minimum lot size. The picture here is of Thicket Hills. The area that we're starting out with the conversation is northwest Dayton. So on the map on the left is the zoning map. This is north Diamond Lake Road, Lawndale, the Dayton River Road, and then Brockton. On the sewer staging plan, and this is hard to read, the different shades of red are, and this would be the twenty forty and then the post twenty fifty area. The areas that are hatched in yellow are parcels that are twenty acres or larger. So again, the intent is if the average lot, lot size is ten acres, then you have to have twenty acres to subdivide. The whole area itself that's outlined in red here is about sixteen hundred acres. Although when you look at, when you only consider those parcels that are over twenty acres, it's nowhere near sixteen hundred acres that could actually be, actually be developed. So those parcels that would benefit from them, there's fourteen parcels plus Daytona Golf Course, which I don't have hatched here. It totals six hundred and eighty-five acres, which is the equivalent of sixty-eight homes. And that would include existing homes as well. So if you have an existing home on twenty acres, you could split off one additional home, one additional lot. More about the boundary, the general idea was to try to follow the Elk River School District line. That sort of works and sort of doesn't. We're trying to find kind of a, a natural boundary, which north Diamond Lake Road, it fits kind of a good southern boundary. And then on the western boundary, this is eighty acres or essentially eighty acres east of Lawndale and it's roughly the eastern border of Daytona Golf Course. And then up to Dayton River Road. And I'm gonna go through these and then we'll come back to the actual questions. Questions on establishing the minimum lot size. And so the, the things that I'd like the commission to consider is the minimum lot size to make a rural property usable. So if you think of if the intent of the A three district is to encourage hobby farms, what is the minimum lot size that's required to have a hobby? The answer is it depends on what the hobby is. And then also what is the minimum lot size that keeps a home feeling like it's rural? And that's a little subjective. It, it also depends on the area that's surrounding the home beyond the property itself. Yep. So.
And what the neighbors are doing.
And what the neighbors are doing. So you can have a one acre lot surrounded by farmland that looks rural, but if you have a one acre lot surrounded by other one acre lots, it's different. So I guess questions?
I guess like when I think of Thicket Hills and I'm purposely picking on this because there's some residents of Thicket Hills in here that maybe they can come up and speak on it, but everyone thinks of rural character different, differently. I love Thicket Hills and that feel, but that's not rural character to me. That's just nice lots and nice homes. But that's different. I grew up on forty acres. So maybe my concept of rural character is warped. But I think that the average lot size, if you're not, if you're not trying to preserve rural character, can work to our benefit to make this more flexible to get Met Council approval. And by going with the average, meaning that if you've got twenty acres, yeah, you got two lots, but I'm okay if you carve out three acres here, three acres here, and you leave fourteen undeveloped and it just has no building entitlement period. So when you talk about minimum lot size, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about too. You don't have to necessarily encompass all the lots. I mean, granted, you could finagle it different ways to make them both ten, but I'm more thinking of the Shani property, right? We kind of, the feedback was is how that was gonna lay out and be functional is you're gonna have some four acre lots. You're gonna have some fifteen acre lots. It's just the way it lays out with topography and preserving stuff.
Sure. So we have, I don't have a slide of this. So we, we have an existing development that's very similar to that. It's Stone Creek, Stonehurst. Stonehurst off of one hundred and twenty-first. So one hundred and twenty-fifth. This was an eight lot subdivision that was approved. I'm not sure what year it was, but it was developed at, I'm gonna say the mid two thousands as a, a community septic system. So it had a different, same idea of what you're talking about, slightly different intent at that time.
And those lots, I just clicked on one, they're less than a half acre.
Yep.
So I wouldn't necess, I wouldn't necessarily advocate for that because it's, community septic systems are probably not gonna happen in today's world.
Prefer not to have one.
Right, exactly. And so you need a minimum, you start with a minimum. What do you need to have approval of concept for two drainfields? And the little bit I know is you gotta probably start with at least two acres to make sure that that's easy, but every parcel's a little different depending on what's going on with the soils.
Right.
So I'm okay with small, like I'm okay with the actual, like the average of ten. That's, is what it is. That's what we have to comply to, but I'm okay with a smaller lot. And you know, especially like on a Shani where you have a five acre, maybe a fifteen acre. I think that you had one that was over twenty. But granted, it was a lot of unusable wetland, but so I don't want to get hung up on the individual size of the lot in the sense of rural character. Because I get it if you got a three acre lot, it's gonna be a different rural character than a fifteen acre lot.
So it would help us to have a minimum and, and you know, from the functionality is you have to have, you know, a, a house, a well and a primary and secondary sec, uh, septic sites. You know, that secondary site, you know, it might not be needed for twenty, thirty years, but you gotta have that space reserved for it.
And it's technically not even needed then if you, because you can do other things. It's just more expensive.
Yep.
A lot more expensive.
Sure. So it, it would still, you know, rather than, I guess, having a, a no minimum where you just require you have to have the well in the two septic sites, be a lot easier to say, okay, it's two acres or two and a half, you know, pick a number.
I like the overall idea of, of having an A three having another option for, for size. A lot of it's gonna come down to like what the other ordinances are, like outbuilding and animal units. Like we have to make sure those make sense because some of our rules are are, are way stricter than other cities and some are actually way more restrictive. And, and from what I've learned, a lot of them were just pulled out of thin air, kind of like, I don't know, just pick an acre size and we'll move on, right? With the idea that someday we'll learn more and make an adjustment and that someday hasn't really come, but this would be when? Because if I, when I was looking, when we were looking for properties, my first thing was how many animal units, right? Because I wanted horses. And there were some cities that I, if I had ten acres, I still couldn't have horses. Like I needed to have at least fifteen acres before I could even have horses at all. In other cities, I could have one acre and have one horse, right? Like so, so as far as what would make it usable for a hobby farm, some of that comes down to the other ordinances that go along with that. Animal units is the big one and outbuildings is a big one. So it would be hard for me to sit here right now and be like, this is the minimum lot size without, without knowing for a fact that we would adjust and make sure the animal unit and the outbuilding ordinances were not also adjusted in such a way to make that doable. Because what I don't want to do is create these supposed rural lots that then are other things say, yeah, but you can't actually do anything. You can't actually have any hobby farm. Like you can't have any animals out there. You can't have any barns. You can't have any fences, but you can have your rural acreage, right? Like that doesn't, like, I would want to make sure that all those things are lining up appropriately. Personally, I would want to go smaller than five for, for any of the hobby type farms, you know, for the hobby farms I was looking at. I didn't even look at anything smaller than five just because I wanted to make sure that I could do all the things I wanted to do. But I have horses, which is bigger than people who necessarily want to have chickens and maybe want to have goats and, and sheep. They can maybe do with slightly smaller. How many acres do you guys have? You have four. So like it can be done on smaller, but five was, was kind of my threshold. And so, yeah, I would want to, I would want to look at some of those other ordinances to see and maybe look at the other, like we have some existing hobby farms in Dayton that are doing really well on smaller than forty acres, right? So one of the things I'd want to do is take a look at all of those and, and see how many of them there are. And, and like not personally survey each of them, but like, are they, is it doable, right? Like, and some of them are people we know and, but those are some of the questions I would have is, is we have to make sure the other ordinances make sense with that. Anything we can do to make, because this is what I said when the Shani property came through. We struggled to buy the eighteen acres we had. That pushed our budget to the absolute limit, which is why a lot of other things haven't happened that I had hoped for. Because there weren't, like, my next, the other options were forty acres. And I'm like, well, I can barely afford eighteen. I'm sure as heck not affording forty or a hundred acres. And that was like never gonna happen. Smaller acre sizes just makes it more possible, like that just opens the doors to more people who are genuinely interested in living this lifestyle. And that's where like, I want to come down as far as we can to make it affordable, but yet still have a, a minimum size that makes running a hobby farm or some sort of agricultural business like doable. So, and I need to do more research on what that actual number is. But I like the idea, very for this idea and I'm glad we're starting this conversation. I also want to look, the person I was talking to, they are also new to like trying to parse out Met Council rules and jargons, but some of the, one, their first reading through some of the, the rules looked like the reason we got pushed, because there are some, some of our neighboring communities that are allowed to, to do more of what we're talking about. And that council isn't coming as down, as hard on them about it. And it's because they have a slightly different label than we have rural. There's like the rural edge or urban-
Diversified rules.
Whatever it is.
Diversified rule.
Yeah. And this person's reading of the rules was that the reason we got pushed into the category we are is about the amount of land we have zoned as industrial.
No.
So, and that's where that was this person's, but like I've also, you know, I want to look more into that. What I, my big takeaway was that's a thousand page document and it's very possible that they, like I've worked with those documents where one thing kind of said, like one area says this thing and another area says this thing. You're like, which area, which, which rule do I actually have to listen to?
Sure.
And so I want to-
The one that benefits you.
Yeah.
So it, it's just to give a quick explanation. So we're, Dayton is the middle of a donut. So we, we have development going- So, we, we have development going all around us, and it's going to eventually approach into the donut hole, and it's gonna keep getting smaller and smaller. So that, that is why the met council's plan is that eventually all of Dayton is going, going to be sewered.
So, I don't care about their plan.
John, can I, there's a few things that I'd like to interject here. So, one of the things I think everybody needs to keep in mind is, right now, and, and this gets to a complaint I have had forever, is I wanna see how it is that that council can control this. Because in my opinion, they have no control over this. They will tell you all day long that you have to stick to a ten acre minimum, but when you say, show me where, I can't find anybody to show me. When we had met council here, I pandered her down, and her answer was, well, it doesn't comply with your comp plan, except when I said, where at in the comp plan does, and then she said, well, you're missing a section. And I said, well, how did you approve with a missing a section? And the next response was, well, we're not gonna require that till the 2050 plan. Okay? And that section is called an I U P, but it's an interim use plan. And what they want to do is, what are we gonna do with the land? So, so, and this got into another conversation. Let's say somebody's got one hundred and twenty acres, and they wanna split it. Right now, we let them split it. Well, what they want in this interim use plan is, what would we allow that land to, and what would be allowed to be done with that land before it's, once it's, once it transitions from ag or in between the fact, or in between whatever it is today and what it's going to be when it's planned out. And we know, I know, I'll pick on Jack here, his property is roughly one hundred and twenty acres. Right now, it is slated for low density residential. That means three per acre, although now they're pushing four per acre. They want to know, we're gonna have a section in the comp plan that says what your plans on are for that property in the meantime. Today, we don't have that. So, when I pressed them further, and I said, well, what if we take that and split in half? And she said, you can't. And we said, why? And we got into the circular thing. So, keep in mind that the 2050 submittal will probably get rejected if we don't have an interim use plan. At least that's what they were telling us. That interim use plan will kill anything that we wanna do that's outside of what they want.
What happens if they kill our plan, our 2050 comp plan?
2050 plan.
It's a litigation process. If you, the question is, is how much you wanna fight, and it's a litigation process.
I think the bottom line is, is that whenever we submit 2050, we're gonna have to, I'm trying to think of a, a good phrase here. We're gonna have to take it. And, but in the meantime, we have the interim time to move.
Okay.
Because, so far, I can't, I, I'm not hearing where we get restrictions.
The direction that I think we're all going into is the, the interim use is, I'll say rural, unsuited residential within this boundary, wherever that boundary is going to be. The future land use, if that's thirty, forty, fifty years from now, is going to be sewer development. So, the intent, met council, what met council is saying is the interim use cannot prohibit the eventual sewered of this area.
Which, right. And so if they are trying to, like, ask us to do everything like they want us to do, that's where they wanna see the ghost plats, which is a huge burden on some, like, the property we just saw tonight. What's the point of doing a ghost plat when the house is in the far corner of the, it's like a waste of time and money, as far as the ghost plat goes. But.
I, I agree.
And even like the, the shaney property, even if you ghost platted it, it's like, I don't know if that would ever happen that way.
Right.
Because of the topography, it's like, everyone thinks of land in two dimensions, and it's not.
Yeah, there was some of the things I wanted to point out too. I think we have the outbuilding question taken care of, I think. And then the animal units, I think we, we almost need to put that cart before this horse. I, I think we, we can adjust the animal units. I, I think the animal unit restrictions are kind of ridiculous once you get above the third acre, but.
When you think of minimum lot size, like, when you think of three acres, I get, so for example, if it's a ten acre average, that means the other, and there's only two, that means the other one's seventeen. And I get your point about wanting a little bit larger.
Yeah, no.
But I don't think there's a problem on the small side. It's like a trade off, and I think it's easier to convince the met council with an averaging method that we're gonna, like, it's easier to do a ghost plat when you got a little three, one three acre and one seventeen acre than it is the opposite way.
Oh, yeah. And I'm not against that. I'm just saying if, if, if we, if staff is asking for a minimum though, like, we want a minimum. So, yes, we can do that, but there still needs to be a minimum. I, at this moment in time, don't feel comfortable saying, oh, it's X, right? I would need to know more. And I think part of it is, a lot of it depends on the parcel, right? A three acre skinny triangle where you're literally on top of your neighbors does not feel very rural. Where if you have a more of a rectangle, or more of a square, it feels like, and also, what are you surrounded by? Like, if you are right up against the road on one of your long skinny side, that doesn't feel very rural if you've got a, you know, major roadway going past you. Whereas if what's next to you is a lake, like, it, it depends.
Or wetlands.
Or wetland.
I mean, they're all ten acre lots, but a lot of those lots have gorgeous wetlands.
Yeah, yeah. So like, or on the flip side though, if it's wetlands, it's not like, yes, it's gorgeous and whatever, but if you genuinely wanted to farm, I can't farm a swamp. Like, so, depending, so that's why it, like, I have a, I kinda have a hard time with the minimum lot size. So I'm kind of fine with the averaging, but I understand what the city staff is saying, like, we need to have some guidelines.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess.
I think a range of three to, are you comfortable, just to help staff narrow it down, like, three to five and then investigate more?
Yes, yeah.
Because this is kind of what we're doing.
So, another option, and this makes it harder for us, is if you have a minimum, I'm gonna call it developable area.
We need a minimum developable area.
Yeah, so, you know, let's say it's five acres, but four and a half is wetland.
Yeah.
You know, versus four acre, I'm making up numbers, say, two acres of, of buildable land.
And I would actually feel more comfortable having a limit, having a hard number on the buildable. Like, you need at least this many acres where you can build a building and put your two septic system. And then beyond that, yeah, because that's really what, I mean, at the end of the day, that's, that's the number that matters most.
Yeah. I could tell you down in Randolph, they did this comprehensive exercise, Randolph Township down in Dakota Coney.
Okay, I was thinking.
Cannon Falls. Anyway, because met council let them stay at two and a half. And where a lot of other people had to, had started bumping up to five. And they thought that how all your proof of septic, they could get by with one and a half at the smallest.
Interesting.
Yeah.
But. Meaning if you wanna talk about buildable land, it seems like a one and a half to two is the, that range.
Of high ground, yeah.
Yeah.
There has to be some flexibility built into it just because of uniqueness of all the properties and topography.
Yeah.
That's why I'd hate to say the minimum too high, and then all of a sudden we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Go like, well, we got a gorgeous twelve acre, or gorgeous seventeen acre, and this one's three, but it just, that's the way it looked out.
Well, and I'd rather have three that's all usable than seventeen where I have like this little tiny inch of dry land I can do anything with, everything else is swamp.
You have horses and big pastures.
Horses don't wanna be in water either, so, and it's terrible for bugs. So like, that's where like, I'm, I'm actually more in line with you. Let's, let's define the usable and then the actual.
Okay. So let's focus on just the usable area.
Yeah.
What number?
I'm comfortable with one and a half to two. I think that we should ask some people that maybe have more knowledge of designing septic systems.
Yes, that's gonna be the bigger issue.
In particular, what, what we know about our soils in Dayton on top of this.
You know, that's gonna vary a lot too, because where I'm at is pure sand.
Lucky you.
Really?
Yeah.
I have nothing but clay.
Well, if you dig down a foot and a half where I'm at, it's just rock hard, black clay. But under that is sand for like ten feet.
Okay.
But, you know, getting to your question, saying, I mean, having a two viable drainfield areas, I don't think it takes a lot of space.
Okay.
But.
Depends on the size of your home.
When, well, I.
That mean that you know where fixtures, right?
Yeah.
If it's more bedrooms.
You know, you have three tanks, and you, and you got the field. It's gotta stay away from everything, but, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't think it eats up that much area, but.
I think we're pretty safe with the one and a half range from, from what I was talking to the Randolph Township people when I was working on the big project.
Have they changed the rules on well location to your septic?
Fifty feet.
Yeah, whatever that's been, it's been that way since I've.
Someone told me recently that they, they recently increased the distance your well has to be from your septic system.
You know, your well's down in the aquifer, it really.
I, because they made a comment. Well, because they made a comment to me, oh, your well is really, like, you're lucky you got it in when you did, because now it has to be further away. That's the only reason.
I suspect the concern there is leakage through the, the downplay to the well. Because the aquifer itself is.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not personally worried. It was just that person made that comment to me, and I was like, okay, whatever.
So, going back to an acre and a half.
Yeah.
And then the question on what do you do with an acre and a half? So an acre and a half, let's say it's sufficient for a house, a well, and septic system in a pole barn.
Might not even fit a pole barn. It all depends. I mean, if you want more, you need to have a bigger lot.
Right.
We're just talking the minimum buildable.
Yep.
But keep in mind, we gotta have ten acre average.
Averaging, so you're gonna have, if you have an acre and a half, you've got eighteen and a half somewhere.
I mean, obviously, the bigger parcels are the ones that are gonna give them more flexibility, like the shaney parcel. Or if you only got twenty acres, you'll have the, whatever makes the most sense the way to do that, that's what you would have to do. Whether it's two tens or a five and a fifteen, or whatever it might be.
So you, you would have, I'm gonna say, you know, someone that wants, not, doesn't wanna live next to anybody, and then you have someone else that has a large hobby farm.
Welcome to Dayton.
Versus having two hobby farms. So, yeah.
Well, did you, do you have a guideline here that you want an average of ten? Because I don't.
Average of ten acres.
I'm not there. But it doesn't matter.
Why do we, why do we need the average of ten? Is it, I, I interpreted what you put in the report as the met council requirement.
That, that's it. So, right now, the met council's requirement of the smallest that we can go in the agricultural area without sewer and water is ten acre lots. The met council is saying that they would allow us the flexibility of going into average density of ten acres. So it still achieves the same sense, but allows the flexibility to have smaller lot sizes, or smaller than ten acres.
Okay.
So we have an acre and a half and five so far.
The five being the total minimum?
We haven't heard from you.
Five being the total?
Yeah, they're quiet tonight.
Um, no, for minimum lot size.
Oh, for buildable or for, I mean, we're, we're kinda talking two concepts.
My five, yeah, my five was talking overall, not minimum.
Not buildable, so.
Gross.
Yeah.
Yeah, gross.
Gross, yeah, that's what.
I'd be okay with less gross, just because again, if we're doing ten acre averages, you're just gonna have variety if you have less. That's all you're gonna have.
Yeah. I'm not sure I'd wanna go less than two.
I know that this is not a public hearing, but there are some people in here that reside on these lots we're talking about that I would like to open up a public hearing to see if they have any feedback on this.
Yeah.
In particular, if you guys, I mean, we're obviously having a pretty broad conversation, but the question is lot size. Do you guys have any feedback on that in your experience? And anything else you wanna add? Yeah, so I'm gonna open the public hearing at eight thirteen. Please come forward, state your name, address. Jack Burdenz?
I do live at one four seven seven zero Thicket Lane, so in one of the neighborhoods you guys have been talking about. I also own one hundred and twenty acres on seventeen five oh one Dayton River Road, which is basically between Lawndale and Brockton. My comments would be this, the, I mean, raw land, raw agricultural land today in Dayton is selling for between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars an acre. So if you were gonna buy five acres to build a new house, not an existing home, because I think you can find existing homes in Dayton on ten or fifteen acres because they've been grandfathered in at a reasonable price, you know, an affordable price anyway. But, you know, you got a half a million bucks in five acres already if you're buying raw agricultural land. So, my perspective, and just for you guys to consider, and I think you've considered a lot of really good things, I would say, you know, between two and three acres as a minimum size would be more feasibly, financially feasible for the landowner, because you gotta put a road or something in. And that comes to my next point, is on the road itself, the less requirements you can have on that road, something maybe either similar to what's in Thicket Hill or Berkshire Hills, which is a road without any gutter. It's just a, a road with, you know, no sides, you know, it's a road, but doesn't have all the fancy things you'd see in a neighborhood. Or even a gravel road makes it even more affordable, but, you know, I don't know that that's something that's feasible or not.
Keeps other cars off of it.
Yeah. Well, it keeps it more rural, though. I, I think the other thing is that, and just speaking to my one hundred and twenty, which is, you know, a good portion of the six eighty-five that's at least being proposed is, is the area that this might be considered in. You know, if you did that kind of a lot size, and most of mine's buildable, you know, but then, you know, I can probably leave sixty to eighty acres as agricultural. It'll be a vineyard, it'll be maybe farmed in corn, whatever. Eventually, well, maybe not, you know, not too short order. I'd like to make it actually urban reserved so that met council actually couldn't get their hands on the sewer and water part of that. But.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, okay. And I, and I do think if the other property is ever developed, it's easier to develop. You know, you got sixty or eighty acres with some barns and ag buildings on them and, and stuff like that. I mean, as you know, we will be applying for an I U P for an event center for a winery at some point in time here, probably within the next twelve months, so just being transparent. I was just trying to think if I had anything else. I, and I think it, it fits with the rural character thing by having some smaller lots, but then leaving this bigger area agricultural. So those would be, you know, I think my things to think about. I, I do, if you're interested, probably no one has a copy of this except for maybe a few people in Thicket Hill or Berkshire Hills. But there was a, originally, kind of an HOA for Thicket Hill, and it had minimum number of animals and these kinds of things. Glad to provide you a copy if you'd like it. I don't know if it's what you wanna do, or if you wanna leave it, you know, like, here's the recommended HOA for the landowner and the city provides that, or how that all works. I mean, there were actually never any fees for the HOA, but it was just like, you know, you can have one outbuilding, you can have so many horses, you can have so many cows or pigs or whatever. Chickens, everything else. So those are, those are kind of my comments. I guess if you have any questions for me specifically as a, as a landowner and someone that, I'd be, you know, I'm interested in this A three district because we've, we actually own twenty acres of that hundred and twenty that's actually butts right up against sewer and water for the city of Dayton. And so that goes all the way down into the historic village. And I've explored the possibility of, you know, okay, well, let's just extend the sewer and water. There's a hundred house capacity or a hundred and twenty house capacity still in that sewer. Why not, you know? And I could do a sewer development there. But, you know, I have a lot of conversations with Dennis and others on the council, and, you know, I know the desire is to keep the city more rural. And so, as you look at this A three district, I mean, I think anything bigger than a two to three acre lot would become pretty financially burdensome for the landowner to put in a road. And you're probably gonna have to pull power, and you're probably gonna have to pull gas. I mean, most of the roads have natural gas on them. And by the time you pull gas and power and put in a road, you know, you're probably talking a half a million bucks or more. And so, you know, it's, at that point, you're like, why do it? I'll just wait for the sewer. You know, because I, I can sell my lots for a lot more and I can put, I can put fifty houses on the same place. I'm gonna put seven, you know, so.
I've been telling council this and planning commission and not that it's right or wrong, but that, that's gonna be a dilemma that even if we allow this, is that there's a feasibility issue involved. It's not, unfortunately, it doesn't make your land much more valuable than farmland at those densities.
No, and I mean, obviously the smaller the lot size, the more feasible it gets, but then, you know, at what point do you potentially, you know, defeat the, the rule component of it, people that want a little larger lots, you know, is a, I mean, you know, a half acre lot's a lot bigger than a third acre lot that you're getting in a Lennar development, but you know, uh.
Yeah, and Corcoran, the large acre lots that are averaging, I think they're, they average ten, but they sell for, the land, the land sells farmland, meaning twenty, thirty thousand an acre.
Yeah.
It doesn't sell.
And I mean, so you've got to have, you've gotta be ultra wealthy to buy a ten acre lot for thirty thousand dollars an acre and then put a home on it, you know, so, because you're.
You're gonna be into a million dollars, yes.
You're into multiple millions of dollars, you know.
Depends on the size of your home, but yes.
Yeah, unless you wanna put a post-fee stamp on ten acres, you know, that you've paid, you know, three, well.
Your mortgage company won't let you do that. Your house can't be worth less than the land is. I tried.
So.
Legitimately.
Anyway, those are my comments. I'm glad to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna provide any feedback? All right, then we will close the public hearing.
Question, I'm gonna put Hayden on the spot. On a two acre lot, how, what can you have for animals?
Oh, let's see. While he's looking into that, have you guys given thought to it? If you haven't, let's talk about the boundary when you're done.
Yeah.
So in ag districts and rural estate and which is what kind of the breakdown starts with in terms of animal units is it starts with the zoning classification and then it goes into the acreage. So if you have a one acre R one lot, that's gonna have different animal unit allowances than if you have a um, something in the A two or the RE that is of similar size. But lots greater than ninety thousand square feet, which I believe is right around two acres.
Just over two.
Atral.
Just over two.
Is, uh, you're allowed between, well, this goes between two and five acres is four animal units. So that would be four horses or I think in the ag districts, one animal unit is equivalent to twenty-five chickens. So that's just a little bit of context in terms of animal units.
So you'd have two hundred chickens on two acres?
Hundred.
Hundred chickens, so.
Well, and I'm not, I don't have it in front of me. I know the, it's not the higher number, it's the lower number. So I'm at seventeen point seven. I'm at the fifteen acre limit. I have to hit twenty or to go to the next limit. So it's not.
So you, you could have fifteen horses?
No, I'm, well, I think it's, yes, I could, but I couldn't, even though I have seventeen acres, I can't have seventeen horses. Like other cities, it is by the acre.
Sure.
We have this like little band, so I'm stuck at the fifteen limit, even though if you were gonna round it, it would round to twenty. So, but.
And there's different, you know, people have different hobbies, so it's much different if you have horses as a hobby versus if you're growing vegetables.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, and ducks and chickens are put together as the same thing, but they're not the same in terms of, of what they do to the land and pigs are extremely destructive to land, but we put them in the same category as horses and cows, which is nonsensical. So, yeah, our, our rules are stupid and should be fixed, but that's for a different time.
Well, and even at that.
We'll just leave it there.
The horse limit is how much money you wanna pay for a.
Yeah, that's.
It, the amount of land is almost irrelevant.
Kind of, yeah. Um, so, but boundary, was that the next question?
You got what you needed, lot size?
That was the first question. Yep, so lot size, what I'm hearing is start with a, say, acre and a half or two and then have consideration of, um, what is needed, we could try to define a little bit better of, of how much land is needed uh, for hobby farms based on the hobby. I mean, find some examples.
Yeah, just for clarity, I mean, maybe this is just my opinion, but one and a half to two was the buildable, but.
Buildable, yeah.
Three to maybe five was the minimum gross.
Well, and I think, yes, I mean, that's kinda, that's where my head's at right now. I'm not like set in stone by any means, but I also think.
I think that's good feedback, though, to give the council.
Oh, yeah.
So they can see if they've got, you know.
But I think one of the things that has to be in the back of our heads, because I think this just, this ultimately makes some decisions, is are we doing this for people who own a hundred and twenty acres and wanna develop? Or are we doing this for the person who owns forty acres and has three kids and wants?
How about twenty acres?
But I mean, like, is this for, I know it's for both, but like, what will work well for an individual who has this, like, twenty acres and wants to split it between them and their children is not necessarily what's gonna work for someone with a hundred and twenty acres and wants to put a development. Like, that's a completely different scenario. And so I'm not, I'm not, if we can find a solution that makes everybody happy, obviously I would prefer that, right? But like, if we have to lean one way or the other, what's the more important way to lean? And I, I have my personal preference at this time, which would be for like the average everyday person, but, um, I don't know enough about, that, part of that is the boundary, right? Like, if.
You're leading right into the boundary.
I know, leading right into the boundary discussion, because depending on where the boundary is, will kind of depend on, because if most of the land is one person, then I guess let's favor the one person who owns most of the land in that boundary area. But if we're widening the boundary area and it includes a lot of smaller twenty, you know, like twenty acre parcels that has maybe a little bit more, they don't, they're not gonna care so much if we limit it, because there's not that many options to average out to ten within, when you only got twenty to work with, so. Boundary area in all of Dayton, but I don't think that's gonna work.
You know, the hardest part about the boundary area is, and everyone's gonna have feelings when their beautiful backyard changes, period. It just, it is what it is. I get it, right? And I don't care if you're on five or ten acres or whenever it changes and you looked at something that was open, whether it's a three acre lot or a ten acre lot, there's someone else there. I get it. And so when you think about the boundaries, I'm trying to think about what are the unintended consequences that might come out of this? I mean, I think there's a lot of positives, but what are we missing anything with unintended consequences? And so far, I haven't really thought of any, but I wanted to say that out there so people like Dennis, Sarah, Paul, we all start thinking about that staff because, you know, we went through that with the master plan of the unintended consequences and I'd rather avoid that again.
Would someone who's not in the boundary be able to request it? Like from, like, or is it no, it has to be in this boundary and that's it?
So the easy answer is if it's adjacent to the boundary, it, it, you can make the argument that it should be added, but the general intent is, you make, make a decision and stick with it, but that gets into the unintended consequences of there's going to be things that happen that we can't predict today.
And with the boundary versus spot zoning, why aren't we just spot zoning the twenty acre parcels within a boundary? So we still need to maybe a boundary?
Yep.
But why aren't we just spot zoning? Because at some point in time, we're gonna have to inform all the property owners that, hey, there's zoning changes and they're gonna have questions. And so if you're, if they don't qualify.
Yeah, just leave them out.
Yeah, just leave them out of this. Why rezone them if they don't qualify?
Well, what about the people who are currently non-conforming but would become conforming?
If they, if they qualify, meaning they have twenty acres.
But like, say, is that.
Unless they can't split their property.
But if someone's.
If that's a ten acre average.
If you're, but if you're on ten acres right now, you're technically, and if, if you have one house on a ten acre thing, you're not considered conforming, right? You're not.
I'm not following you. You could never split your property to begin with, so.
Well, yeah.
Because that's what really this is about, is splitting your property.
But I guess sometimes people have come to us and they're, I guess, so maybe a question, maybe the way I wanna say this is, I have some neighbors who, um, have horses and everything else and they're, oh, the GIS map is down for me. I don't know.
Yeah, mine too.
Um, but they are.
Try to refresh.
They're less than twenty. Um, and so sometimes some of the rules we talk about for ag don't really apply to them because they're not conforming to ag, but yet they're zoned ag. And so they're always like, well, so what am I, right? Because I'm not ag, because in this regards, I don't follow your rules, but I'm zoned ag. So, and even we ran into that with, when we were building and asking questions, they kept trying to throw restrictions on me that I'd be like, but no, you, I'm zoned ag. Like, I appreciate that I'm not on forty acres, but my zoning is A one. So my question is, what about those people who are on ten acre lots, who are currently zoned A one and are a little bit weird? And when they call to have questions, the city's like, we're not quite sure what to do with you. Would they have the option to like turn into this A three and are we?
I don't know if there'd be any advantage, because nothing's gonna be different other than in A three, you can split your lot, right? Nothing will be different, meaning in A one, you'd probably wanna stay A one.
Okay.
If you're on ten acres, because you're gonna have more flexible to put up a barn.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Versus if you were in RE maybe.
Yeah.
You're gonna have more flexibility. So I don't.
Yes, so having a small lot that's still zoned A one, it's going to have an effect on how big of a.
Yeah.
Pole barn you can build or, or horses or whatever else.
Yeah.
Setbacks. We don't consider, like, say, somebody today, I don't know if we have example, but if there's a five acre A one lot, they're not non-conforming.
The lot, it's, well, the lot itself is non-conforming. So there's two different things. There's the lot and then there's the structures. The structures aren't applicable to that. So, you know, if you're set, if you have a, if your setback is too small, then it's a non-conforming setback.
Yes.
But, yeah, if you have a five acre lot where the minimum lot size is forty acres, you can't subdivide to be less than.
And, yeah, there may be restrictions. We've seen that on Elm Creek Parkway or, uh.
Elm Creek Road, yeah.
Elm Creek Road, where, yeah, the A one was, he couldn't put a house up, um, but the R one let him. And we're not talking about rezoning this whole area, are we? We're talking about making it available.
Well, we're, we're talking about creating an A three district. So a new A three district.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but so that's unfortunately our job is to zone properties. So if we create a new A three district, it seems like you kinda gotta apply it to properties, otherwise why are we creating it? I mean, maybe if people come to us.
Right.
That would be, I'll just say that on, being on a planning commissioner, council member, always having to decide whether you're allowed or not allowed and in some cases it makes sense and some it doesn't, and here you are making that judgment, it's not a place I wanna be in, to be honest. I feel, because I feel both sides of it, but some cases are gonna be more applicable than others. And so that's why I personally think you gotta zone it. Otherwise, it's, it's just a burden on everyone making these decisions that, and we're gonna, even on beautiful properties that are being split, there's gonna be people that don't want their view to change. And we're gonna, it's just, it is what it is.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna be doing that, we gotta make sure that the A three is not more restrictive in any fashion or we're gonna have a take.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, as far, when you get into land uses and setbacks and, and, yeah, or this is a whole other conversation that'll be months from now. I guess my thought is it, it's gonna be as similar to the A one or A two district as, as we can make it.
With the exception that you can now split your.
Yep.
Property.
Yep.
Where you couldn't in the other ones.
Okay, so we're, we're still on boundaries.
So, and I'm not saying we need to make the decision, but I think that concept needs to be brought up about, are we spot zoning within the boundary? Are we blanketing the whole thing? I think it's better to spot zone with whatever we decide how we're gonna implement this, whether it's a ten acre average or whatever it is, that's gonna dictate, because if you don't qualify, I, I don't see the point of.
Are you wanting a spot zone within the entire city or within a specific area?
I don't, I think the entire city, we, we would struggle pitching this plan in a way that we got everything figured out to the Met Council. I'd rather prefer to do it where we might happen, like, the, where the area we're in is perfect, but I'm not, if other people have other areas and wanna bring it up, that's fine, but I think we're just gonna be, it's gonna make the battle tougher.
Sure. So the area that, that we're suggesting in Northwest Dayton is probably the most practical because of topography and because where it is um, at the end of our sewer line.
Yeah. The only, I looked at the boundary and what went through my brain is how is Pioneer Parkway gonna eventually get to where Dayton Parkway comes out? And how does that fit? So basically, there's the Dal, there's a little bit of Dahlheimer property, I believe, that you left out of the area.
Yep.
And which would be immediately to the west of the future Dayton Parkway. So the question becomes is, should that area be part of this two to have a transition or do we wanna keep that?
Yep, that's a good question. You have a suggestion? So, and I, I wish I could draw on here, but so generally Dayton Parkway is going to come up from Zanzibar and then come over up here, some, from point A to point B, however that alignment is.
Right.
Um, so what you're bringing up is the west side of the Parkway, should that be within, included in the A three district or excluded?
Were you talking about Pioneer Parkway or Dayton Parkway?
Both. So Pioneer Parkway's gonna run into Dayton Parkway, so.
Yeah.
Obviously, at that point, we don't really know. We, no one's decided what's gonna happen to Pioneer Parkway after that. But if we turn this into A three and development happens, I think that the market's gonna tell us what happens to Pioneer Parkway. People choose to, I mean, we might turn it into A three and no one subdivides it, for all we know. But that's what the, the overall planning concept, that's why I wanna make sure we take into consideration, is how Pioneer Parkway's gonna tie into there and what, if anything, is the future to the west of there, of how to connect everything.
Okay.
And when, you know, even when you look at the Dahlheimer parcels that are just to the west of the future Dayton Parkway, you know, I kinda see a logic that, you know what, if they wanted to include them, I'd be okay with that.
Include in the A three?
Yeah. But that would probably be the defining point of saying, all right, east of that, we shunk.
But is there much to the east of that? I mean, he has, you're talking about Randy?
Um, yeah, he's, he, well, there's a lot of private property on the east of it and then Randy has a lot more land to the east of it.
Yeah, he's got it all the way to the.
Yeah, but he has to the west of those.
It's between forty and, between a forty and an eighty acre, uh, strip.
And, you know, if the city would really like to see some of this development occur, the reality is we probably need to include some, and I don't know if Randy has any interest in it or not, but we need to include some of these larger egg purses if you actually wanna see it happen, because it's gonna be hard to happen if we just start picking twenty acre purses, because a lot of people, they just don't wanna subdivide it. They like their backyards and privacy.
Or are they subdividing for family?
Yeah.
Or are they subdividing for family?
Yeah, we've seen a few of those.
Yep.
That couldn't.
Well, and that's where, like I said, that's, I think we have to define what's our, what's our priority. Is it so that individual private landowners can more easily subdivide for family purposes, or is it so people can develop? Like, that's.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be in that category. I just wanna look at it as property and let the properties figure it out. Because I, I, I get your point, Sarah.
Yeah.
But it, it gets too emotional and then we, it's hard decisions.
Well, then you're gonna make everyone a P U D O or everyone a, a conditionally, is there something weird?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make it simple. The south boundary, so right now it's drawn at North Diamond Lake Road. Is that good or do you wanna go farther south?
I think we should go all the way to South Diamond Lake Road. That's very person, that's very.
Well, there's a lot of property on the west side of Diamond Lake that's gonna be plunky to.
I was gonna say, like, in particular on the west side of Diamond Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that it should be included or something. I mean, unless. I mean, people have explored connecting to Rogers Utilities there, correct?
Yes.
And what has always the answer been from us or Rogers or why is it?
We want Dayton Utilities, not Rogers Utilities.
Yeah, if, yeah, if that's the case, yeah, I would.
We're gonna have a hard time getting across that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is follow, uh, Diamond Lake down to, south Diamond Lake Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you bring it over to Zanzibar then?
I don't know if I'd bring it to Zanzibar.
Include those properties in the east side of the lake?
I don't know. I.
I don't know how, a lot of wetlands there.
Yeah, actually, now that I zoom in, there are, yeah.
So it's growing.
I think we should consider, like everyone mentioned, to South Diamond Lake Road all the way over to Zanzibar. And as a, once we understand more what we're doing, that's what we should be looking at too, is like Paul brought up. These are, there's a lot of wetlands and a lot of weird parcels. And to me, those are the parcels that are well suited for this in the first place.
Okay, so you're saying South Diamond Lake Road and then Zanzibar and then going wherever this connection is going to be here.
Yeah.
So all of this area.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions that we can do research on?
John, the south, from what I remember, the, the leg coming up from the interceptor from the south. Doesn't that terminate right around South Diamond also? So that whole area is kind of at the end of a pipe.
That'd be a Jason Quisberg question, sorry.
I think that would be a good point of having the pipe plan in front of us when we con, if we're going to do this, is pick, picking that concrete area.
Just thinking, since our two engineer commissioners were off, I told Jason, we probably wouldn't have any engineering questions.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's where it ends, but, because I know, you know, one of the property owners on there was, was looking at this exact same thing. They were looking at doing this. I don't know, you know, what Lane's thoughts are, or I guess it's not Heinon, it's Heinon RIE bought it. But anyways, there's a lot of property in there too that my guess is it's not going to get piped, but.
Yeah, I guess the other staff for question, or other question for staff, it's just to help my mind. Because I don't want to put the city in a situation where we have to fight the Met Council is. And I know, I think Dennis not picking any, but I know Dennis would be just fine with something less than ten acres on average, the way it sounds like. But I just want to know if I'm going to recommend something to council is, I don't want to put us in a situation where we're going to be fighting litigation. So to get some input, and I, I get it, it's always a back and forth of Met Council's gray and, and we can't interpret it. But I just don't want to be in that situation.
Sure, I can ask our Met Council rep to attend these conversations.
I can tell you what the answer is going to be from the rep. I, I want to see what the law says. And I did talk to Zach about that today. I think our attorney's going to look at it and see what lever they have.
Yeah.
Because they're going to come in and say, no.
That's going to make me more comfortable with the recommendation, making sure that we're not getting ourselves in a situation where we got to fight the Met Council because we got enough things to pay for. An illegal battle, anyway. Anything else? All right.
If you think of something, let me know. But, so again. I guess the thought is we'll have a similar discussion in January. Hopefully we'll have more commissioners. I'll have new maps that are showing kind of a, we'll say draft district boundary. And we can look at the number of lots that are twenty acres or larger that, that could be subdividable. Uh, then you have a conversation with their building official as far as educating us on septic systems, the difference between septic on sand versus clay. And I'm assuming most of this area is going to be clay, but there's river bottoms too. I don't know. Jack, you're the resident expert.
I go from sugar sand, I got probably twenty acres of sugar sand to clay.
Okay, so there's both.
And it seems like the, the way they do practice nowadays, everybody gets a mound anyways. So, I, I don't know.
Okay, I think we had a good conversation. We've got a good start on it.
Good. All right, then we are moving on to item number eight B, recommendation of approval for, or actually eight A, recommendation of approval of the cannabis ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Um, item that we briefly discussed in September. This ordinance amendment in front of you is to, related to including cannabis use businesses within the zoning ordinance. Uh, just a couple of background notes. In 2023, Minnesota Legislature legalized adult use cannabis statewide. Uh, the state created sixteen classifications that are listed on the next slide and then also in your packet for cannabis-related businesses to obtain prior to beginning operations. The state did give local authority related to zoning, providing them the opportunity to regulate businesses in their communities specific to time, place, and manner. And just a note that the state requires that all licenses be allowed within a local jurisdiction in some capacity. So cities are not allowed to outright prohibit any of the state identified licenses. So here is, you can see the top part is a list of the licenses that will be obtained through the state from business owners. And just a recap on the process. Uh, the state will receive an application for a cannabis business license and review the application against provisions established by state statute and regulations adopted by the Office of Cannabis Management. Uh, one, once the application is received, the state will notify the local authority regarding the application, which then the city would have thirty days to respond related to what is required. Excuse me, for, um, local approval, uh, whether that be a conditional use permit or something like that. And then design requirements and standards for building operation and overall site design. In August 2024, the city council passed moratorium prohibiting cannabis businesses, uh, within the city until January 1st, 2025, to provide time for these required ordinance amendments to be in place. I will just note that a couple of the updates recently from the Office of Cannabis Management have further prolonged what looks to be like, uh, instead of January 1st rolling out licensing process, it doesn't look like that they will be ready at that point. So there will be a little bit more, uh, room before we start seeing these businesses up and operating in town. City staff discussed this ordinance with you guys in September, as I mentioned before, and incorporated their recommendations for review and consideration, um, of adopting them in November, which was, uh, tabled and, uh, re-noticed, uh, in the paper. Just a brief touch on the recommendations and kind of the revised ordinance moving forward. Current land use provisions in the draft ordinance reflect where these types of uses would normally be allowed if they weren't considered a cannabis use. So cannabis manufacturing and things of the like would be allowed where manufacturing businesses would be normally. I'll just note that the Planning Commission, when this was previously discussed, recommended that retail locations obtain a conditional use permit prior to operation. Once review has been conducted on one or more of these, uh, locations, the ordinance can be amended to allow retail locations as permitted, similar to what you'd see with tobacco stores and liquor stores, with the opportunity to further incorporate, um, those consistent conditions that we would see under those CUPs into the, that would be found in the initial review. The next section basically lists the maximum allowed, um, buffer requirements that the state allowed local, uh, authority to set. Uh, and I'll just note that at the discussion of the city council in November, they expressed interest in treating buffers for these businesses the same as liquor license buffers, uh, which is a hundred feet from a school. Uh, the additional buffer in the liquor store section is a hundred feet from a religious institution. State statute does not allow for, uh, the local jurisdiction to set a buffer against these religious institutions related to cannabis retail. I think if, everybody's well aware that there's one school location in town, um, which is here and completely surrounded by residential. So the buffer requirements is not going to be as, uh, require an in-depth review as some other, uh, cities that have been incorporating larger buffer areas. Uh, and then home occupations, this was discussed as well at the city council level. Uh, it was in the interest of the city council to not allow these, um, as home occupations. Whereas unless it is considered an agriculture A1 for outdoor cultivation, you wouldn't be able to manufacture cannabis or low potency hemp-derived edibles, um, in your garage type of thing. And that would be vetted out through the opportunity of having to first obtain a license through the state. They reach out to the city and say, we do not allow these in residential districts that are as home occupations, and they would not be able to obtain a state license. In the packet as well, this was basically just for reference to kind of clear up the long ordinance amendment that lays out where these things would be allowed, uh, in this use table. Staff ultimately recommends approval of this ordinance amendment, uh, as it is required for local provisions to be established prior to 2025. It's anticipated that the city council would consider this at their January fourteenth, um, meeting for official adoption. And then just a note as well, any changes made by the OCM following the beginning of 2025 will be reviewed against this ordinance. And any necessary changes will be brought back to you promptly, um, for your consideration. I think the one outstanding question that I would have for the attending commissioners is regarding that conditional use process for retail locations. I know that there was some back and forth between what we heard from the planning commission in that a conditional use permit would be, I guess, appropriate at this point in the early stages, whereas the city council had recommended that we would just follow what, uh, where items like tobacco shops and liquor stores are allowed. If they're permitted in that district, cannabis retail would be permitted in those districts. And if they're conditional, the same goes. So that would be the one outstanding question that I would have just for clarification before this goes to the council. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I'd be completely fine with no CUP for retail. So if it's just retail sale of cannabis in a retail location, yeah, we don't need a CUP.
Okay, and would that go for?
Guidelines of tobacco.
Following the same guidelines of tobacco, alcohol.
Yeah.
So like in, I think, Balsam Lane, the GMU four district, for example, I think a liquor store requires a conditional use permit. Would you be okay with mimicking that for that area as if there's a conditional use permit required?
I think mimicking the code is the most straightforward way to do it.
Sure.
We need to adjust code for different areas, different story, but.
Yeah. And if that is the consensus and we can include that in amendment, in, um, not necessarily an amendment to the ordinance, but, uh, just a, a note within that motion that would be made for approval for this item, we can certainly make that correction, uh, for the council in January. So they would review what you guys would recommend.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. It was a long packet to read on this.
It's a lot of information in its name.
Halfway through it, I was like, what am I doing, still reading this?
This is the shortest packet we've had in months.
It is, yeah.
Well, maybe it's just reading ordinance is that, is.
Well, I mean, I think this table.
Yeah, it helped.
Provides a lot of clarity too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't have any further discussion, do you guys?
No, I mean, I, like I said, I think this table really lays it out clearly and the uses and where it's, where it's allowed. And I think I'm in alignment with what was, uh, established here. I mean, I fully support not having it as in-home operation.
Yeah.
Let them just do it illegally.
Yeah, exactly.
They're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
And obviously, there are provisions related to personal use and things like that related to a commercial operation, so.
Yeah. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. With that said, I'm open, so if everyone, assuming everyone's in agreement about the CUP, we just need a motion with an amendment to include or to match, have retail, not have a CUP?
Yeah, I think that, uh, if you made a motion to, as, um, with the correction as directed by the commission, we've got our marching orders and understand what you mean by that and.
Perfect.
This is still a public hearing.
Yeah, right.
I need to open it then.
Yes.
I was waiting for everyone to leave. At eight fifty-three, I'm going to open the public hearing on this.
I'll just check and make sure. This is more standard to our meetings, you know, a year ago.
We have no one in attendance.
Nobody wants to watch.
At eight fifty-three, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you, John.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance with the amendment that we discussed regarding retail sales.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B in public hearings, recommendation of approval of ordinance for the signage.
All right, Nick, thank you. It's easier to tell a story with this. So, uh, in 2023, we, we had a number of complaints about the cluttered intersection or intersections that were cluttered with temporary signs. So temporary signs is things you just stick in the ground. Staff did some research and found that we do not prohibit signs, anyone from sticking a sign in the right of way. It was brought to the council, new ordinance was adopted that prohibited signs in the right of way. From that point, uh, the staff started picking up signs that were in violation of the ordinance, which then angered many residents, made, made residents happy and other ones angry. Once we got into the election season, it was a little bit more anger and less happy people. And the direction from the council is like, let's just stop this and then we'll address it after the election. So now it's after the election. To try to simplify this a little bit is should temporary signs be allowed in the right of way? And, and I want to be specific, this is city right of way. Hennepin County does not allow it in county right of way, like that won't change.
Temporary signs, keyword in right of way.
In right of way.
So you could have it granted, let's just.
On your property.
On your property, but not in the right of way.
Right.
I think the concern is it's hard to know where that right of way is.
Yes.
And that's where, I mean, from personal experience, I was picking up my signs and I was like, I have to stay out of the right of way. And I was like, and where is that? Like, how would I, so you have this adjustment ten feet from the edge of roadways.
Which, which could be in or out of the right of way, but for simplicity, it's easy to figure out where ten feet is from the road.
That I could work with. I would have no ambiguity on where is ten feet from the roadway. But the out of the right of way, when the right of way is not consistent, I think that's the bigger issue. Even if the road, if the right of way was consistent, I could look that up and know. But the right of way is wildly inconsistent and there is no markings. So I think that's where, like, I'm kind of with the, how is I supposed to know that this was in the right of way here when a corner down, it's not, like, that doesn't make any sense. So I, I, I started to understand more why people were getting mad. But I also hate all that clutter, right? Particularly around, like, the intersections where it's hard to see and know what's going on. So I think if we can modify it to specify edge of roadways and with the understanding that in some cases it may wind up in the right of way. But part of my question is, what is, like, how often? If we said ten feet from the edge of roadway, how often would that actually be encroaching on the city's right of way?
Depends on the right of way.
So what's the benefit of five feet, ten feet, fifteen feet? Like, a sign's a sign, it looks like junk.
Are you saying that my signs look like junk?
I say, in general. Abundance of signage on a road that's not necessary is clutter and is not necessary. I think during elections, I, I do feel it's different, right? I mean, that's just part of that process. It's part of getting your name out there, all that, right? So, I mean, it's very challenging to like, how do you decide what's right and what's wrong? And, um, I'm just anti-sign, right? Like, I just, I wish people, like, I don't think parade homes, like, people use their phone to find where they're going. And if you're going to go to parade homes, you're probably looking at your phone where the house is. Like, you don't need thirty signs pointing you to the house. But I also get it as part of our culture and it's going to happen. But I just don't know, like, what are we gaining by saying ten feet back? As opposed to just, we let signs happen? Because again, it's still something with.
So you're saying that you might be okay with just letting them happen, like going back the old way?
If we're going to let signs be there, why does it matter if they're two feet off the road or ten feet off the road? It's still clutter that.
Paul, would you go in the direction of not allowing any temporary signs?
Be tempted to, but like.
It's different during the election season.
Yeah, but it's also, then it's like the grad parties and the birthday parties and the.
Garage sales.
Garage sales and all that, like, that's part of, like, the community too and like.
But we are allowed to distinguish between commercial and non-commercial. It's tricky, but you can do it.
Yeah.
So, so, because I think there's no question, a grad party is not commercial.
It's a garage sale commercial.
That's, that's where the question comes, like, so. I don't think it is. I don't think, I wouldn't think it is either. I mean, they did mention specifically that, that you can, you are allowed to restrict commercial signage more than non-commercial. You are absolutely allowed to do that. It gets tricky in how you define commercial. You're absolutely allowed to do that, it gets tricky in how you define commercial because of things like garage sales. It's very clear, a graduation party or a birthday party is not commercial.
Or a lost dog.
Yes, absolutely not commercial, no question there. What about a garage sale, what about a bake sale, what if you were doing a car wash fundraiser, like?
Just don't put it in the right of way and you're fine.
Yeah.
Better, I mean, it's, is it a, a legal business, do the, is it an L L C, is it like, you know, is it a company?
When we're enforcing, we're not going to look.
No, you're not, no.
Yeah, but I think, I think the, what Sarah brought up, I think matches the intent of why we had a sign ordinance in the first place. Meaning we wanted to get rid of all the commercial signs, the sprinkling, blow your system out, the housing, you name it.
Sell your house for cheap, rebuy ugly houses.
And you're gonna still be picking them up a lot because even if we pass an ordinance, they still gonna exist.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you could even find them to make it stop. But, but that's when you'd also get into maybe legal battles, like if we passed an ordinance with commercial.
Sure.
Labelled out, but never just kept picking up signs and left the garage sale signs and graduation signs that disappeared anyway. It probably would solve the problem if we're not creating something that is too hard to enforce for you guys. But if we're not gonna, I mean, you know what I mean, if we're not gonna find the commercial businesses, they're, they're just gonna keep putting them out and we're just gonna keep picking them up.
Well, then at a certain point, it's a waste of the city's money.
Yeah.
To, to what?
To have to go pick up signs.
We're gonna have to pick them up regardless, unless we just leave them.
Well, that's, like, if, it sounded, it sounded like what was happening was they learned, and by they, I mean, like, the.
Everybody.
Everybody, that.
Put them on Friday afternoon.
Put them on Friday after, like, at a certain time and then they'll be there all weekend and then pick up, you know, and then they're, and like, so then it just was this weird silly game. And so it took, we paid people money to go take down the signs of people and that, I think that's why the residents got mad, cause the residents didn't know that game, right? Like, your average residence who was putting up a sign for a graduation party or a garage sale, didn't know to play the game and wait till later on Friday to do it. They just put it up at a regular time, then their sign got taken down and then a few hours later, they see the jerks go up and put their home, like, the home and they're like, wait a minute, how come my garage sale got taken down from that corner and now this, you know, the Burnett Homes sign is up, like, what the heck? Cause they, that, and, cause they don't know to play this silly game, so.
Do our communities, neighboring communities have anything like this, like just Maple Grove or Champlin have any kind of ordinance saying?
Commercial versus non-commercial.
I don't think we would.
I mean, I see what you sent to your John, I mean, this is good stuff on the content neutral, just understanding where you're coming from. I just trying to understand, is this, is this what I'd like, Paul signs, is this what other cities do too?
I think it's actually not that hard to distinguish whether it's a commercial sign or not, right? It's like, if, if it's a business, you're trying to get people to pay you for a service that's.
It's commercial.
That you're, or that you're, yeah, you're trying to make money, like, a garage sale, no, like, that's a one-time event, it's not a business.
No, you're not reporting it and come to the I R S.
No, exactly, so I, I don't think it'd be that bad and if there's any gray areas, leave the sign, maybe, right? Like, if you're going to pick signs up, but are we ever gonna win the battle against the housing developments and the sprinkler people and all that? By going and taking signs and is it worth the battle?
We're like, we could just go pick them up with other ordinance, right?
If they're on your property.
If they're in the right of way.
Or if they're on your property without your permission.
Right.
You could do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, if they're in the right of way, you know.
I guess that'd be a question too, do other cities spend a lot of effort picking up signs?
I don't know.
At what point do they just give up?
Well, and it's part of it, the issue of where we're at in our growth right now, because once, like, part of it is we've got so many new developments and everyone's trying to stand out from the other new development and half the time it's the same developer trying to distinguish their five developments.
It's all the services that go with a new home, the landscaping, the sprinklers, it's all the same people that are trying to capture that business.
But like, once it's established, it doesn't seem like, it, not that it's not there, but it's not, I think we're in this unique position where we're having a, a much bigger influx than I think a lot of our local commu- like our surrounding communities are dealing with. And you go further out, they don't have the problem for the opposite reason, no one's building anything. I think part of our, why it seems so prolific here is because of where we're at at that stage. And because it is, because we are developing around the entire edge of our community, it doesn't matter which way you come in. There's signs, like, right, like, other communities go from one direction, so if you just didn't go in that way, you don't even know it's a problem. But there's literally no way in or out of Dayton without running into these signs, so it's more prevalent.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen it for a while, but when Blissey Farmers' opinion developed, they had massive balloon up, weather balloon, two hundred feet in the air, whatever. Like, I could see it from my yard, it's just like, that's the kind of thing that drives me nuts, cause it's got such a massive visual impact. As opposed to a sign that you're just driving past in the road, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, like I said, I mean, I, I don't like signs, I'd rather just get rid of them, but I don't think we, from a resident's standpoint, we can't say you can't put up your lost dog sign and you can't put up your garage sale sign and you're, you know, that, that's the stuff, like, we have to allow that stuff, cause it's just part of the community.
Yeah.
So then it's just a matter of, do we want the battle of trying to fight the commercial signs?
One.
Or is it?
A question I would have is how much actual staff time is going to that, that could be going to other more useful things?
Sure, I, um, it depends on the type of sign, so, you know, pulling a temporary sign doesn't, you know, that's, that's a minute to get out of the truck, pull it and throw it to the back and get back in. Some of the signs that we were, that we were pulling were cemented into the ground.
Seriously?
He didn't have a chainsaw.
But doesn't that like break other rules to cement a sign into the right of way?
Yes.
Okay, so those.
Cause we don't allow signs in the right of way.
What I mean.
When you remove signs, did you ever reach out to the people that put the signs out, ever?
Um, the lo- the real developers, yes, but the smaller signs, no.
What was the general feedback you'd get from them?
I didn't know that was a rule.
And then the sign was still up after you told them it was a rule?
Eventually they, they were put up, there were some, so there, there's, let me say, there's different types of temporary signs that were problematic. So you, you've got the simple ones and, you know, those, they're simple. You have the ones that are, are, um, I'm gonna call the flag, so you've got a large flag pole, um, you can see them in Pioneer Parkway, they're, they're up again. So those took effort, uh, they were cemented into so that they didn't, kept falling over, I'm assuming, um, they're back again, I don't believe they're cemented in. Um, then we have, uh, plywood, so we allow, uh, thirty-two square feet, so for one sheet of plywood for developments. Um, as you drive around, there's a lot of signs that are two sheets of plywood. They also have to be, I'm gonna say the on-premise signs for development, we've had a few projects where same developer, but they'll leave the si- they'll leave the structure and then just change the messaging and, you know, so we had River Hills that was advertised on, uh, I think it was Ione Gardens or something like that.
I think Paul's message is clear that if, and Nick even brought this up, is it's a losing battle, so unless we're communicating to them and they're gonna stop, it seems like we're just gonna be putting a lot of time to this and we're committing resources to it.
Sure. We, so, I mean, we're talking about signs today, um, you know, speeding is similar, uh, we're, at some point, we're gonna talk about car, uh, parking on grass. So I mean, zoning enforcement is always a losing battle, um, you know, whether, how, no matter how lenient your rules are.
Right, the question becomes, how much do we want to enforce it, which means, do we want the ordinance?
I mean, I, I guess, can we have the ordinance to say no commercial signage in right of way and then we have the ability to enforce it if it's egregious and just needs to be addressed?
I mean, that's already, a lot of our ordinances are already only complaint based.
Yeah.
Yes, signs were more proactive.
Signs were proactive, I was just gonna say that.
Yeah.
Mister Chair, members of the commission, I'll just note for reference, I did get a chance to pull up the Maple Grove and Champlin ordinances. Um, Champlin is more strict where they, doesn't seem like they would allow any right of way signage. Maple Grove has a little bit more leniency in that, where it allows rummage sale signs to be up for a certain amount of time, like, I think it's a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty hours in a week. I think it was a hundred and twenty hours in total for the span of the sale. And then, uh, the other one that they noted as well, our residential new development properties, like the Parade of Homes, um, are allowed only between Friday and Monday. So that's when they can go up and then they have to come down. Now, I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to these to see how much time is being spent on enforcing these sections of the code.
If they follow the rules, I mean, I think that's what we, we'd be good to know instead of, you know, what we did, I think.
Did, did you, they actually specify the content?
Uh, Maple Grove does, yes.
Cause we've been told that that was illegal.
Okay, yeah, cause I.
That you could not specify which signs.
Let's see here, they have a bigger checkbook, so.
I, I was gonna say, or they don't care.
They have a bigger checkbook, if someone cares. So the section of the code that relates to placement of signs in the right of way or public land is only governmental signs, signs for a rummage sale posted no more than a hundred and twenty hours in an any eight-day period and signs advertising the sale of real estate between the hours of six P M Friday to six A M Monday may be erected or placed within the right of way or easement.
That's definitely not content neutral.
Yeah.
But I think it's very specific though, because, you know, let's face it, developers don't wanna be on the bad side of a city, they're gonna comply if you reach out to them and they, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna be back for the next approval, the next approval. And so I'm sure I've worked in Maple Grove and there, I'm sure there's a few signs that stale longer than they should.
Sure.
But to me, that seems like a better route than what we did.
And when we're talking about the large development signs and, you know, let's say it's a dozen signs, it's probably more than that, but, um, let's say it's a dozen signs and then we have a hundred or a thousand small temporary signs, so like, what is the problem that we're trying to solve?
I think the small temporary signs that are literally a foot off the road is that we should just go around and pick them up, period, every now and then. And that's, that's simple. A lot of the. Like a garage sale sign doesn't get, no one sticks it, like, the sprinkler guy and all these advertising, I mean, they're literally on the curb.
Sure.
Whoever gets out of the car.
See it faster, yeah.
Yeah.
Or easier.
Well, it's easier to put, like, they don't really care either, they're coming in, they're jumping out of their truck, they're putting it up.
And they don't even care if that sign gets taken or if it's there three years from now, they don't even know half the time.
Yeah, they don't track it.
I mean, it's quick to pick up a sign.
That's the problem we're trying to solve.
We also have a big city, I mean, it's gotta take a couple hours for somebody to drive around the city and.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not sure how much money we actually wind up dedicating to that when.
I don't know, I just.
It is the, the complaints I get are specifically the developer signs.
It's not.
The larger ones.
It's, well, or it's the, I mean, those are the problem, but.
It's the lineup.
Any given weekend, you can go to the, the.
Pine View.
Pine View and there's twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four signs right in.
If we just concrete that entire thing and they can't put the signs in.
They'll move it to the, I, I, I don't know, I, I.
I agree, I mean, yeah.
If we can do content.
The whole circle's lined with signs.
Oh, we can special, we can spec- specify, there we go, commercial versus non-commercial, that we can do, we are allowed to do that, to specify that.
Just to be clear, John, I mean, it's just the League of Cities saying it, so it's not like it's a law, but they're suggesting not to do that, but I'm with Sarah that I think it makes sense and they're not gonna contest us, I just don't think that's gonna get us in trouble.
Well, I mean, it says right here, commercial speech versus not, like, you're allowed to do it.
Again, they, they basically say to avoid challenges when adopting sign, our city should not favor commercial speech over none. Not saying we have to follow that.
No, we're not, we're, we're not favoring commercial speech. We are favoring non-commercial speech, that's fine, there's no issue there. The issue is when you favor commercial speech and when you let the developers put signs up, but you don't let someone put their lost dog sign up, that's what that reads to me.
Yeah.
You can't favor commercial speech, you can't say developers, go ahead, put your signs wherever you want.
I think it's one over the others, the way I read it, but not, not saying that, I don't quite agree with you.
All, well, all the, all the examples they give are, you can't let businesses put signs up and then tell your residents they can't put their own signs up.
Yeah, it's, it's the freedom of speech of individuals that need to be protected, not the freedom of speech of businesses.
Yeah, they don't.
That's why I think that's.
That's, yes, cause specifically right after that, courts treat commercial speech differently than non-commercial speech and do not afford it the same level of protection. It's literally the next line down, commercial speech enjoys some first amendment protection, but not as much as non-commercial speech. It's the non-commercial speech we have to be careful of, we can say no commercial signs in the right of way, period, end of story, and then leave it to the city to do like every other ordinance and only enforce it if there's major complaints.
And that's why I think if we're gonna write an ordinance, it can be specific like Maple Grove's to realtors, because we can reach out to them and say, hey, you're in violation of the ordinance and maybe they're superior eventually, it's, it won't be an ongoing issue all the time. You can't reach out to anyone with a lawn sprinkling sign and have any success, probably, is my guess.
Call that number and they're not gonna care.
Right, but at least the ordinance, whatever ordinance we draft, we should have something that is, we can actually enforce and feel like, you know, we can reach out to people and say, hey, you're in violation and try to clean it up.
So if we say no commercial signage in the right of way, what are these developers gonna do to still put their signs?
Get it out of the right of way.
Well, I think they, they're still gonna put them up there and take the chance that the city will remove them.
Yeah, they'll put them up Saturday morning, Friday night.
Yeah, leave for I R S Saturday morning, they're gonna put them up.
Yeah.
And their pockets are deep enough, they don't care if they get taken or backed out again.
Well, keep in mind that the signs going up though are realtors, usually the Lenars of the world, they're hiring, um, well, maybe the Lenars have a lot of the in-house people, but, for example, up in Riverwalk, that is not the developer, they hire a separate real estate firm to market their homes, so it's a bigger hit to their.
So they might be more willing to play.
Yeah, well, they're used to the game, because Maple Grove isn't the only city, I'm sure that has that ordinance.
So if you're not in the right of way, then you're either on public property or private property.
And you got permission on private.
Yeah, if you can find people to give them permission, right?
Right.
Or you put them in someone's yard anyway and they just take them down.
Yeah.
Which is what I do.
So in general, I think the no commercial in the right of way is a way to go.
Okay, um, but they would be allowed outside of the right of way?
Yeah, and if you wanna make an exception for the realtors to put signs up on weekends, I think that's.
Oh, sure, okay.
Yeah, we could acknowledge.
That would make sense to me, because then it's, we're not enforcing, I mean, it is what it is, I guess.
It's really the flood of builder signs, it's not, I don't know that realist, you know, realtor signs are.
Well, when you say a builder sign, I mean, I get they're marketing their subdivision a little bit, but really it's the there, there, it's a realtor sign, when, I think when Maple Grove says realtor sign, they're talking about.
Those.
Subdivision signs, I think it's the same thing.
I don't think it is.
I, I don't know, all I know is I see.
I'm not, I'm not talking the big Rayburn Hill sign, I'm talking the little signs.
You'll see it tomorrow and the next day.
Yeah, yeah.
Come by my house, I have a pile in my basement.
Size limit.
Don't put them in my yard.
Was that John, sorry?
Size limits for temporary signs.
Thirty-two square feet seems like a lot.
That's big.
I mean, the little signs, the typical signs are what, what, what are they?
Two to four, I would say.
Two to four.
Like a yard sign?
Yeah, two to four feet even seems big. I'm thinking, like, the sprinkler guy signs, like, the Pine View and, and, uh, one twenty-nine, the little roundabout gets piled full of signs, it's all the little rectangles that are what, maybe sixteen by eighteen, sixteen by twenty?
Yeah.
I wanna say eighteen by twenty-four.
Could be, yeah.
Just from, from the political, like, the sign options I had, I think that was the smallest size I could buy.
So if you're doing a temporary sign, like for a garage sale, anything like that, they're likely always the sign.
Okay, so I guess my question is, do you wanna put a limit on the size, so like, can I put a, for say, a garage sale sign that's thirty-two square feet?
I'd like, if you're gonna put a limit on it, I want it to be smaller than thirty-two square feet.
For private signs?
So I would say two by fours, eight square feet.
That's pretty big.
That's still big, but.
Maybe, wasn't this intended, John, for signs that are on?
Uh, so this, the language here is more, um, you know, use a, uh, Dean's Pumpkins as an example of, um, I gotta read this.
It's a commercial sign, it's not allowed.
Yes, so allowing it, a commercial.
In the public right of ways key.
Yes, they can have it there, they just have to ask, have the property owner's permission.
Yeah.
So the way that's, this is read, so, uh, or intended, like, on a corner lot, you could have two sheets of plywood as signs, they cannot, um, be more than four feet tall, so you're horizontal, it's similar to a fence.
But they're on the property in question, right?
On the property line, not in the right of way.
Right, so I, yeah, so that, I think that was meant sheet of plywood, but.
Yeah.
It wasn't, like, you'd have a sheet of plywood on, on the right of way, on, on the roundabout, or, yeah.
I, just a little bit of context that I wanted to provide, I mean, ideally, for the way that I see it, the larger the sign that you allow as a temporary sign, um, I would consider furthering that back from the street right of way. Cause if you have a four-square-foot sign, um, it seems like it would make sense to have it closer to the road, rather than if you had a thirty-two-square-foot sign right in the right of way on the street. So just something to consider is that the size of the sign, um, could be in connection with the, the distance you'd want it from the street.
Eric?
I am a little confused how we're talking about road, what, what's in the right of way versus what's on the property.
Yes.
And I know we shifted the language to say edge of the roadway and we're kind of ignoring whether it's in the. And I know we shifted the language to say edge of the roadway and we're kind of ignoring whether it's in the right of way or not.
Yeah.
And so I think we need to get back on the same page as where we, where we're at there, so we're talking apples to apples, cuz I think we're kinda.
We're going all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how about this, it's. Well, not even close to ten o'clock.
Oh, we're, we're, it's nice, y'all. Can I say one more?
Yeah.
So. If, is this limiting the size of our, our private citizen signage in the right of way? This is more geared towards like. The commercial signage that's just off the right of way. Right, so are we trying to limit the size of the sign that's on private property at that point?
Just, to be clear, this ordinance is not discriminating between commercial and non-commercial at this point.
Yeah.
It's both.
Yeah.
So if we implemented commercial versus non-commercial.
Yeah.
Then we would have to add that layer in.
Still, yeah, do we still need signage size? Like, are we saying private signage isn't any bigger than sixteen square feet? But then if you put a commercial sign on private property, are we?
Aren't there other rules for that, though?
I personally think that there should just be no commercial signage except for realtors. I just, at least we've now narrowed it down to one. They're, they're still gonna pop up. I'm not saying they're not gonna pop up cuz we have an ordinance. But Maple Grove makes sense to me.
But sprinkler people can still put it on private property if they have permission.
Well, that's, that's the next step. That's the next step is, all right, if you're not in the right of way, and I don't know, to me, if you're in the right of way or not in the right of way. Not only is it an issue for the person putting the sign out, it's an issue for staff picking up signs on top of it.
Yeah.
So I don't know if distinguishing in the right of way or not the right of way is the right answer.
Yeah.
Cuz then staff has to have their phone order or whatever with the G I S map and guessing on. If the angle the sun was right in the G I S photo.
Ten feet off the street.
Yeah.
That's.
So I think that makes, that makes sense to keep that in there, is ten feet off the street. And I think we just need to add in some wording that commercial signs are not permitted. That that's what we want on the street and are committed to go pick them up, except for realtor signs, and maybe we can craft Maple Grove's language. I think. Um, it'd be good if we could have a conversation with Maple Grove to see. Hopefully there's someone still experienced there enough, because I'm sure it was a bigger problem fifteen years ago than it is today in Maple Grove.
Developments, yeah, all right.
Not many.
I know, but it's still happening.
Yeah, I'd be curious to how they, if they enforce it even.
Sure. Okay, we'll, we'll craft an amendment. Um, this is a public hearing?
It is nine twenty-two. I will open the public hearing on this matter. Does anyone? Mr. Speaker, is anyone online?
There is nobody online, Mr. Chair.
I think we should wait ten minutes, see if it shows up.
It is nine twenty-two. I will close the public hearing. And so this is a non-action item from your perspective. I know you.
The direction is for us to do some editing and then bring it back to you.
Great, perfect.
Motion to table.
Yep.
Yeah, I will. Motion to table, so we can talk about it again.
Second, I'm excited.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you'll be good to talk about it again at the commission and then you'll get to talk about it at city council.
I'm so excited.
After that, so.
I, I think we did the right thing by trying to focus in and I know it.
Yeah, I think that's.
Don't make it easier.
Yeah.
All right, um, on the new business, and we already hit that item, notices and announcements.
Okay, this is gonna be kind of a round robin. I'm gonna look that up even for things I forget. Um, as the commissioner knows, uh, we're gonna be short a commissioner soon, uh, so we are looking for a replacement for Sarah. The announcement is out, it can be found, or I should say that the application for commissions is on the city's webpage. Uh, it's been posted on social media, um, so if you know of anyone that may have an interest in this, this is a great opportunity to get involved with the city government. And know what's going on, so. As you guys know, as commissioners, you know more than the average resident and you know more much sooner than the average resident, so. When we apply it, it takes about two years be- between when a plot is approved or goes through the approval process before something is built. Which may most people find entertaining somewhat, so, um, pays very well, twenty-five bucks a meeting, so. Other items, uh, in this.
Have you had some responses from the online stuff?
We've had, I think, three, so that the, it was posted on Monday, uh, we've had three or four applicants.
Okay.
So it's getting noticed, but, you know, some people look at social media and a lot of people do not.
Yeah.
Just like a lot, many people watch this.
Yeah, I heard about it opening through a friend when I applied, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, general update, so, uh, Riverview Villas, so this is a town home project in the old village. Um, here's the current status. This was approved as two buildings, each building with three units. And the first building is going up, so you can think of, you. Does your memory of looking at this in two dimensions look the same as it does in three? Three dimensions.
Yeah, there's a nice porch in the front.
Yeah.
Was there?
Little balconies up there too.
I thought that was the balconies and it was.
Did, what did the council ever decide about siding? I don't wanna debate whether vinyl, but I'm just curious what they decided.
Vinyl siding, although there's no siding up. My understanding, well, I don't know if my understanding is correct or not. I, I think it's been changed, but not because of the city requirements.
Okay.
I thought we just left the cement board for the front or left a lot of the vinyl on the side.
So what?
As he put in fire retardant.
Vinyl is not fire retard, retarded, it melts pretty quick.
Yeah.
And these buildings have a, well, it's eight, eight feet between buildings.
That is a fair complaint of vinyl, not just that it looks tacky. That's not a valid concern.
It melts.
I like that.
That I, that I would find, as a genuine concern.
I do recall requesting them to make that corner one not look like a corner one, which is the other side we can't see, so my, my guess is they didn't change anything on that elevation, but.
That building hasn't been built.
Yeah.
So, and I can't remember.
When that happens.
If it was different. I don't think it was.
I think that's becoming one of my new pet peeves, is if you put a corner house up, make it look like a corner house. Don't just have a regular house that has no windows on the side facing the street, right? Like, put a couple more windows in, make a house, you know?
I will note that that is a requirement in residential districts for single-family homes, that if you're on a corner street, you have to have a window on. There, a window has to be provided somewhere on that elevation.
Yeah, more than a window, though, like, make it look like.
Purposeful.
Purposeful, yeah, like, I, I know a corner house that looks like a corner.
A fake porch, you know?
You still only have one window.
All right, keep going, sorry, I digress.
Uh, Dayton Storage, so this is, you know, we'll say forty thousand square feet of self-storage on a territorial road. They've got a foundation.
I think that's a long time ago.
I think a lot of the time has gone into getting water to the facility, um, and, uh, I think within the last month, I've been in contact with them and as well as Marty, the Public Works Director regarding, um. Getting the water connection done and, uh, ordering a meter for that, uh, so utilities are going in, if not, they might already be in.
So that water thing, that, wasn't it like five hundred grand?
For the, for the suppression tanks.
Water for fire suppression.
So, so what we're talking about, this is an area that, that has.
Good money itself.
Well and septic system. Um, it's a large commercial building that requires a fire sprinkler system, so without, with just a well, they needed, I don't know, whatever. How many hundreds of gallons of water tanks and.
Yeah, cuz water pressure from the well just doesn't.
Yeah.
Doesn't do the job sometimes.
We have the same issue with, uh, the Public Works building.
That's why the industrial buildings in public are with private water, put up water towers.
I don't have that kind of money.
So Opus, yeah, Opus went up quick, so this started, uh, I don't know what month it was, late, late summer.
Real quick.
Um, so the primary tenant is Turbine Pro, so this is, uh, I'm not gonna call it a manufacturer, but a, um, specialized repair company based in Rogers that's going to be moving to Dayton. Um, they're not, they're taking about three quarters of the building.
We stole them from Rogers.
Feels good, doesn't it?
The owner occupied their property over there, so.
Dayton ninety-four, um, so this is N F I and I'm trying to remember, it's more of a.
Warehousing and distribution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, national company.
New Jersey-based.
Brayburn Trails East, first and second edition. Uh, streets are, are in, so, um, grading just started late summer.
Yeah, permits are actually being pulled on the first edition now, getting the model homes up. Uh, David Weekly is, uh, doing that and, uh, there's one last edition that has yet to be platted.
So the streets are all drivable if you wanna go on tour. Uh, the Baxter property, this is, uh, nine and a half acres that the city purchased on, uh, one hundred and seven, one hundred and seventeenth. Uh, for a future city facility, so that was closed on a couple of weeks.
What did the city pay for?
I can't remember now.
It was around six, give or take. I don't remember.
Okay.
Seems like a long time ago now.
Wasn't it, like, yeah, it, it was somewhere around six.
Okay.
Riverwalk, second and third edition, so similarly, uh, the street is in, it's nice to drive around, um. Let me see, that was probably put in within the last month or so.
Are the, did, are the first edition lots pretty well built out?
You know, I.
Cause that, this is on the higher end of any home price in the city of Hanson, they have a nice product.
Correct, yeah, Hanson and M and I are the main builders in this area. Um, I would say that the Riverwalk first edition, I've been, uh. It's not uncommon to see still, um, permits for that area being pulled. I'd say when I first started here in the summer, I wasn't seeing a whole lot of that in the, in the original Riverwalk. Um, but now more so than ever, the first edition and second edition are starting to pull permits.
M and I is in there too?
Yes. And, uh, Robert Thomas as well as a new.
Pretty different product than Hanson's.
Potentially a new builder in town. I don't, I haven't seen any historical permits on Robert Thomas homes, but they're.
His name ring a bell?
Yeah, they are.
They're a big builder. They're traditions owns, owns them.
Okay, yeah, they are.
They're really big down in the south metro.
Okay.
Are they also like, what do they resemble in, in the houses that they build the product?
They're a higher, they're closer to Hanson than they are the national builders.
Yeah.
They're not as, well, I don't wanna say, don't bash Hanson so much, but I should bash Robert Thomas. I mean, I think Hanson's are a little nicer than Robert Thomas, but Robert Thomas is very nice.
I'd say typical home price that I've seen for Hanson homes in this area is around nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, and they're bigger homes.
Yeah, they are. Four-car garages in some cases.
Got some rich neighbors.
Oh, my gosh.
That just buckles my mind.
Yeah.
Sunday and Screens eleventh edition, so this is on the southwest corner of Sunday and Spock Course. Road is also fairly new within the last month. M T L and curbside waste, so these are side by side. Uh, M T L was completed this fall, oh, both were completed this, this fall, so there's still landscaping and. Some minor things that need to be done. That's it.
Can I ask about cubes and what's going on?
Um, I will have more news next week.
Okay.
I was hoping I'd have it today, but.
This respective tenant looking at half of it, manufactured.
Okay, just been empty for a while.
The other half?
Uh, it's all empty to my knowledge.
No, but you're currently, it's a.
Are you talking about?
A current tenant, I've just heard the rumor in the street, I'm not gonna say their name or anything, but is looking at half the building, about half the building.
Cuz I thought they had taken a half.
Yeah, not the other half.
There'll be. Uh, Deed will put out a press release next week and until then I, I can't see a whole lot, but, yeah. Not supposed to see a whole lot, I, I have in the past.
But for your clarification, Mr. Mayor, there, I don't believe that there's been any, uh, discussion about the second half of that building.
Right, so we're talking about the first half.
Exactly.
Talking about the same half.
First half.
That's.
Not what I have been told, the rumor.
Which half is the first half? They're pretty open about what.
Well, the office, the, the way the building was designed, the office is only on one side of it, so I'll be curious to see which half is the first half.
Oh, all right. We ready to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Close, I, um, as far as the next meeting for January, uh, we've got an internews permit for a home extended business. Uh, we'll talk about signs again.
It's not.
Love talking about signs.
No dogs.
They're the only, there could be some clerical, um, ordinance amendments that we could, could get to that, uh, could be brought to you guys for discussion.
Um, sure, we, we had a resident at the last council meeting that, that was challenging the ordinance that prohibits parking on the grass, so that's likely to come back to council. Um, we, we've had a tremendously busy fall, so there's a lot of smaller items that we've had intention of getting to and just never did, so. Um, I'm thinking we might have a longer, uh, short conversation about many topics, um, and then we'll also discuss, uh, the A three district again.
Is the parking in the grass ordinance part of the parking ordinance?
Yes.
And our parking ordinance, the way it's structured, it covers all uses. It doesn't, like, for example, if, if you're in a R. I forget what the multifamily is, R five or whatever, whatever the multifamily district is, you have to reference to the parking section. I believe, is that fair? If we're gonna hit the parking section, I can tell you right now that we might as well do something about our parking for multifamilies.
And that is on, that's on our radar and we've got, uh, references that can, um, provide context to a more up-to-date code that reflects what you see in other communities. Um, I don't know if that would be the same conversation that would be had related to recreational vehicles and trailers being parked on the grass.
I'm more thinking if we're gonna hit the parking ordinance.
Might as well do it.
Might as well do it.
Sure.
And I don't, I don't wanna make it overly complicated cuz there's a lot going on with different uses, but.
Yep.
I mean, I guess I, what I would ask you guys is like, I think our industrial is even like based upon employee counts sometimes. And that's just, I mean, it's wrong.
So my opinion on, yes, whatever we do, it'll be wrong, no matter what it is. Um, every commercial, every, every industrial user is unique.
Yes, make it as wrong the best we can.
And there are things that we've seen in other codes where, um, you can take a look at the floor plan of a building and say, okay, this many office, uh, square footage requires this much parking and then the rest is warehouse. I mean, there are other alternatives to, rather than using employee count, as you said, that's quite a difficult task to address.
There's better alternatives than employee count.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And just a note for the record, the next meeting in January is January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
So if I'm not technically sworn in as a.
You're still here.
I'm still here, okay, so I'll be at that one, but that will be my last one, as a commissioner.
Unless we table the sign ordinance again.
You'll have to fight Dennis for the, uh, council liaison to the planning commission.
I might.
We can, we can have two.
Okay.
Make a motion to a jury?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Nice job. Nice chair for.
You got a stunt before ten o'clock.
Actually, I'm disappointed.